Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The Danvers Zoning Board of Appeals is now in session. I will begin by introducing the members. To my far right, Mr. John Bonner, Mr. Ken Scholes, Ms. Rebecca Kilborn, myself, Robert Signetti, Mr. Jeff Sauer to my left, and Mr. Ken Javainian. Our building inspector, Mr. Rich Maloney, is here, and our secretary, Kathy Archibald. The way we will -- oh, yeah, the way we proceed -- please, would you shut off your cell phones before I forget. The applicant will come up, make a presentation. The board will ask questions of the applicant. When the board is through questioning the applicant, we will then give the audience a chance to either ask questions or make comments. After the audience is through making question -- asking questions and making comments, we will go back to the board for deliberations. During deliberations, there will be no questions or comments. And depending on which way the board deliberates, I will give several options to the applicant depending on the deliberations. I think that's it. Oh, we have minutes.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the minutes from our last meeting.
Second. All right. We also have a very long --
All in favor, aye.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
We also have a very long agenda, so I would ask the applicants and the audience to please be brief. We will not hear any cases after 11 o'clock, any new cases. So I'd like to get through this whole agenda. We do -- does everyone have an agenda? There should be some --
There's some here, and there's some --
Some outside the door.
They're all here?
They're all here?
Okay.
Okay.
Feel free to walk up and get an agenda.
And we will start with the continued cases first. We have one continued, continue, and then we will go to the -- and then we'll go right down the agenda.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, our first case tonight is Atari Bertwani Kromosko, docket number 18-4788, requesting a finding for, in addition to a single-family home, a non-conforming use located in C1A zoning in accordance with Section 3.10.1 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 3 Charter Street. This case had been continued to today, and we are in receipt of a letter. Mr. Signetti, I would like to thank the board for continuing my case to December 10th. Unfortunately, my plot plan, as built, will not be ready in time for my case to be heard on that day, which is today. I am requesting that my case be continued to January 7, 2019. Thank you for your consideration. Mr. Kromosko.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we continue this meeting to our January 7 meeting.
Do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next case.
The next case is Scott Silver, Essex Development LLC, docket number 18-4789, requesting a variance to add to structure to create headroom and second means of egress for second floor, and a special permit to convert a single family to a two-family in accordance with Section 30.2.4(c) and 30.2.4 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 23 Locust Street.
Mr. Chairman, I'll recuse myself from this case.
Okay.
Mr. Silver.
Mr. Chairman, I'm keeping on this one. We requested that the two members that weren't here for the last meeting to review the tape and sign an affidavit.
Yeah.
We got one from Ken Scholes.
I did not review the tape.
Okay, so John can't sit on the tape, but Ken, yes?
Right, we still have four.
It opens with four.
And we still have four.
Were you expecting four?
And you --
No, we need to --
Okay.
Okay, and you're willing to go with the four?
Yeah.
Because you're legally liable to have five.
Entitled to have five.
Entitled to have five, thank you.
He's tired tonight.
I'm working my way up. All right, go ahead.
So Scott Silver, 23 Locust Street. I was here before speaking of this situation. The question I had was a parking issue, I believe. And I provided a plan that predicted all the parking requirements for this structure.
I see you've also got snow storage, too.
Yeah. Reviewed with Rich, Mr. Maloney, and discussed it and put it on paper, so.
Okay, I think this is what we asked you to do. So are you ready for questions from the board?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the new plan. It looks good. I don't think I have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't -- is the fence in the back, it's going to be new? That's going to be a new fence? Okay. And you're just proposing 18 inches of grass? That's --
Strip down more on it.
Yeah, okay. That's all. Thank you.
Jeff, do you have any questions?
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Ken?
I have no questions.
I, too, have no questions. Do we have any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, sir. Identify yourself, please.
John Bonner, Director Butter at 3 Oak Street. I believe this new plan addresses my concerns, and I just wanted to be clear, it's going to be a new fence all the way around the property. No further questions.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, you go to drill.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Doug in Town Meeting Member Precinct 1. Just a question about the parking spaces again, because we talked about that last time. So it looks like on the plan here, they're -- they look like sufficiently -- to be sufficiently wide enough. Just concerned, again, with the egress. So the way it's drawn here, it looks like someone can turn around in the back and then drive out headfirst into the street? Is that accurate? All right, because that was a concern. And then I think if you take in that shed out, that would provide that enough space for that? Yeah, okay, great. And you said last time you definitely taking the shed or the garage, tear it down. Yep, okay, thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, back to the board.
I would vote for this, as the plan shows.
I'll vote for this. It's a lot of pavement, but I appreciate that you got the parking spaces on the lot, so it's better than the street. Thank you.
I would vote for this if I could.
Okay.
I'd vote for this, too.
I, too, would vote for this, and I believe we're asking for a variance. Could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board grant the variance to create a new structure, headroom, and second means of egress for the second-floor unit. The hardship is the structure of the land, that is the hardship. This condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A literal enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance will not create any substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw.
Do I have a second?
You have to read the special permit. Do you want that separate?
Yes.
Yeah. Second.
Go ahead, you going to read that?
Do we want to vote on the variance? Or do you want me to read everything together, and then vote on the whole thing?
Read everything together. Read the -- actually, this language is part of the variance, right?
Yeah.
Rich?
The special permit.
Special permit is the criteria of the second floor.
Right. I make a motion that we grant the special permit to convert the single-family into a two-family at 23 Locust Street. The municipal water sewer systems will not be overloaded by the proposed use. The public streets shall not become overloaded by proposed use. The value of the land, the buildings, will not be depreciated by the proposed use. The specific site is an appropriate location for this use or structure. The use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use. The proposed use of structure will be in harmony with the general purpose of this bylaw.
Second.
All right, all in favor of the variance and the special permit? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Thanks so much.
Good luck.
Mr. Chairman, our next case is 149 High Street LLC, docket number 18-4775, seeking to modify the parking situation on the amended special permit docket Z-1926, to construct two shed dormers and an exterior landing, and a finding is necessary to alter the existing four-family in accordance with Section 3.11 and Section 30.2.4 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 149 High Street. Mr. Chairman, we're in receipt of a letter from Brett Gonzalez, from the Department of Public Works for the town of Danvers. I reviewed the parking layout plan for 149 High Street and noticed that parking stalls 1A, 2A, and 4A are within the public right-of-way. These parking spaces will need to be moved so that they are totally on private property and not encroaching into the right-of-way. I hope this information is -- helps.
Good evening, and Bob, this is 149 High Street LLC. We did receive Mr. John Bonner's correspondence earlier today, so we modified the plan as he's requested, as you've seen. We just provided the spaces 1A, 4A, and 2A are now completely contained beyond the property line or the street line here, so they were basically moved about three or four feet inland as compared to the previous location. We have, as you can see on the plan, eight parking spaces, which is adequate for the four condominium units here at 149 High Street. So really, the reason we're here tonight is because of the parking layout. We previously had a layout that had a curb cut that was wider than 30 feet going onto Perry Street. This was a result primarily of the previous layout, which had a curb cut that was 54-some odd feet wide, approximately 50 feet wide. And so the DPW has requested, required, that we reduce the curb cut to 30 feet, which has led to the parking layout that you see here. On behalf of your visiting --
Okay, so you're modifying the parking that you had presented before. The five regular members will be voting on this, and we'll start with you, Ken.
So you went to site planning for parking, and everything's legit as far as -- I mean...
Mr. Herrick went to the DPW, and I believe his DPW is now satisfied with the reduction of the -- by moving the spaces completely onto the property. We did send an email copy of this to Mr. Goncalves earlier this afternoon, so I don't know if you had a chance to actually see it, but we basically have moved these spaces inland into the property as he's requested.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Jeff?
The only other question I have is that the High Street curb cut is -- has been acceptable all along at this point, so...
Right, we really didn't change it, but we previously had a situation where those three or four spaces stacked along the residence, and that's a wrong situation.
Okay, I have no further questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
How do you get to parking space 1B?
So these will be assigned to particular condominium units. So condominium unit 1 will have 1A and 1B, and they'll have to use a valet parking kind of style, so they have the back out of 1B, only if the car is not positioned in space 1A. It's similar valet parking to the 4A, 4B, 2A, 2B situation that you see there. They'll have to coordinate that within the household.
I'm never in really the -- I'll save it for comments, but -- so we don't have an approval from DPW even on this plan, yet?
Well, I received Mr. Goncalves' comment this afternoon, and obviously just this afternoon.
You're trying to --
And obviously just this afternoon.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yes, the only concern was that those parking spaces were piqued on town land, so that was his only request to move them.
Okay.
So I've adjusted them per DPW request.
Okay.
Okay, Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So on Perry Street, we don't have a sidewalk on Perry. Is that right?
That's correct.
And is it six total spaces or eight?
Eight total spaces, and two on High Street.
Two, okay. And then, oh, so 4B and 2B are stacked on 4A and 2A?
That's correct.
Okay, how does that work?
No parking.
Yeah. I guess I have no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Griffin, I know you're here on parking, but I know that property's kind of barren out there, and I don't believe you go to site plan. Is there any plan for landscaping or anything to address the look of this?
Well, we've actually improved the landscaping significantly. You probably noticed the -- I don't know if you've driven by, but there's a nice bed outside of the new entrance here for unit number one. They've done some significant landscaping improvements around the building itself, removed some impervious surfaces, as you know, and recently repainted.
How about particular gist of the parking spots, though? Like abovities or something to kind of break that up?
Well, we've added a fence down here, as was discussed at our previous meetings and requested by Mrs. McMonney to provide screening for this area. We also added the stone and basically put a big rock in the middle of it because the owner -- owners of the property would park very close to their parking lot here, which made it impossible to park. I think there's been a fair amount of communication with her during the construction process. I think we tried to satisfy her, Mr. Herrick, from here.
Okay, and as far as the curb cut change, that's something you guys are doing? Is that granite curbing, or is it just going to be a burn? Or what's that going to be?
We've basically removed the pavement that used to be in this particular area here, replaced it with lawn, and we shortened up the curb cuts as indicated here. We haven't added any curbing, and we're not proposing a curb, because we think it's necessary.
So the curb cuts changed, but we're not adding curbing?
That's correct.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Okay, anyone else on the board have any questions? I don't have any questions. Anyone from the audience have any questions or comments? Yes, sir, would you go to the microphone, please?
Hillborough Street, Town Meeting Member Precinct 1. I thought I heard the comment that there were no sidewalks on that street. If at some point in the future sidewalk, a sidewalk, were asked on that side of the street or proposed, how would that be affected by this? Or would it be?
It shouldn't be, because the problem we had before was that he was encroaching on town land. He is totally on his own property now, and I assume the sidewalks would be on town property.
Okay, just asking. Just don't want to see a problem for the town with this piece of development down the future. Just asking.
He's on his own property. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, back to the board. Ken?
I'd vote for this.
Jeff?
Yeah, I'm not crazy about the stacked parking, but I would vote for it.
Becky?
I didn't vote for this before, and I'm still not really thrilled with this. I'd like to see a parking lot. It's a four-family apartment building, and there's no parking for guests. I'm never in favor of tandem parking. I don't care for it. I don't think I would vote for it.
Good. Good.
And I have to reiterate what they said about the stacked parking. I'm not thrilled about that, but I guess I would vote for it as it is.
You're on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I mean, we satisfied the town engineer's complaint about where the spots are located. It's on his land. I'm not thrilled with stacked parking either, but it's their problem to deal with. I don't like the fact that we're not putting curbing in there. In fact, there's no sidewalk. You know, just like you say, where are guests going to park? They're probably going to park right there, but...
Park on the street.
Yeah. So, I mean, I just don't want to create a new problem, but as presented, I would vote for it.
I, too, would vote for this. This is a special permit and a finding, right?
You need to modify the special permit.
So we need a special permit? Mr. Chairman, I move that the board grant the modification for the special permit as the municipal water and sewer systems shall not be overloaded by the proposed use, the public streets shall not be overloaded by the proposed use, the value of other land and buildings will not be depreciated by the proposed use, the specific site is an appropriate location for the use or structures, the use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood, there will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians, and adequate and appropriate facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use, structure, and condition. Oh, yeah, and the proposed use of structure will be in harmony with the general purpose of this bylaw, and we want to reference drawing dated 12/5 and revised on 12/10.
Can I just make a -- go ahead, you can get a second, and then I'll make the --
I'll second. I'll second.
This has not been approved by DPW, and I think that it has to be contingent on approval by...
And we'll add the condition of approval by the DPW before moving forward.
They couldn't do it anyway. If it wasn't approved by the DPW, they couldn't do it anyway, but sure, make that a condition.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. One more.
Good luck.
Good luck. There are some seats up front here. Ma'am, there's a seat here, there's a seat there.
Two of the best ones out of concert, come on.
Yeah, right up front.
These are the best seats.
All right, here we go. We're going to the top of the agenda. JKKLLC, Brian Cranny, docket number 18-4791, requesting a finding to replace the current non-conforming sign with an electric reader board sign. The sign became non-conforming with zoning change in 2010 in accordance with 37.12 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 22 to 28 Water Street. Mr. Cranny?
Thank you, Brian Cranny. I'm just here to -- I'd like to change the sign, not the size of the sign, the location of the sign, more the graphics and installing an electronic reader board to better market my company and help run this great business.
All right, a quick question on the -- you understand on that reader board, you can only change it once a day?
That's correct. I do understand that.
So it won't be flashing and that kind of stuff?
That's correct.
Okay, I notice in your examples here, you have 4th of July, and are you going to, like, other than advertise your business, bring up things like, you know, Merry Christmas and that kind of stuff?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'd be wide open to any community messages, you know, that people would ask me to do. We don't plan on changing it very often. I use examples like, we sell boxes in the storage facility, now hiring plumber on the signs, but it would, you know, it would only be changed, you know, it'd probably, you know, no more than once a day, but probably more like once a week.
Okay, so it'd be more permanent than anything?
Yes.
Really? Is that it? Do you want to take questions now?
Certainly.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So not only can it not change, it can't flash either. I just want to make sure I make that point.
Absolutely. No, I'm working with a company that's very familiar with what's allowed and what's not.
And is the exact same square footage as what's there?
That's correct.
So physically, no change in the post or anything?
No, that picture shows wrapping around the existing post, but the existing post will be the same.
And how will the control of the sign go? Where -- is it type within your business? Is it something you can do from home or...
They would do it from inside, you know, you could do it on a laptop from your home, but it would be more, you know, done within business, you know, during the day to change for the next day.
Okay.
Yeah, they can do it on a laptop right in the office.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Cranny, what's the height from the base of the pole to the top of the sign? And is that staying the same as it is now?
Everything's staying exactly the same.
So no height difference from the ground all the way to the top?
No, sir.
I have no further questions, thank you.
Becky?
Can I ask a question, Rich?
Sure.
Okay. So the current sign is rounded on the top, and the new sign is flat and extends out on the sides. Does that add to the square footage?
No, the way we measure signs, it's an area we're rectangle around all the sign elements, so that's considered a square sign by our...
So it sticks out a little bit on the edges?
Still the 144, though, I think.
Yeah, right.
Right.
That sign is -- was built under the I-1 regulation, so it's 20 feet high, 100 square feet of sign area.
Do you understand what I'm asking? This here?
Yeah.
It says they measure it squared off.
We measure it squared off.
So there's imaginary square around it.
So it's the same size as the original sign permit application is in your package. If you look at that, it's the same, 12 by 8, if you look at the overall dimensions of the original sign permit. We included it in the package to make it clear.
Okay, as long as you're comfortable with it. I like it better, actually.
Yeah, I went over everything with Mr. Cranny about no flash and no blinking.
He seems to know.
Scared straight.
Rich preparedness. Well, I told him, everybody that caught a digital sign encounter signs because they violate that regulation, so.
Won't happen very much.
We'd like to ban them.
So this, let me just ask you, this is 144 to the edges of this. Is that correct?
That's correct.
The edge, and this is still 144 from the edge of this to the edge of this?
That's correct.
Even though it looks like it extends out over the edge?
That's correct.
You're going to make the body smaller?
Yes. This was a draft -- I would prefer to keep it, the new, the sign with the curved edges, but I won't exceed, whatever that top piece is, will never exceed the 144.
Okay, then I'm satisfied. That's fine.
I understand your question.
Yeah, okay.
I have no questions, Mr. Chairman.
I have no questions.
I, too, have no questions. Anybody in the audience?
Yeah, I actually have one more.
Sure.
Mr. Cranny, so will this be lit at night, and -- or will it turn off with your business hours? Is it going to run 24/7?
No, no. I had planned on running it from 6:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night.
6:00 to 10:00, okay.
Just to try to capture the traffic.
Thank you.
Can you take that as a condition?
Absolutely.
Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Could you go to the microphone, please? We are on television.
Andrea Daly, can you -- is this picking up? Is the microphone picking up?
As far as we know.
Andrea Daly, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. I was a little bit concerned about this sign, and I went to talk to Richard Maloney about this, and it's in keeping with the other signs in the area. I find no objections at all. It's a very attractive sign, and we have several signs that are lighted in that area, and this is in keeping with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any questions or comments? You go to the microphone, please.
Steve Matczak, 8 Mill Street, I'm on the butter to Mr. Cranny, and I'm kind of concerned that an electric sign on Water Street is more appropriate for a commercial street like 114 or Route 1, and there are condos and other residences right across the street from Mr. Cranny and the sign, and I, myself, will probably see the glow of the sign for as long as it's on. And so I think especially in evening hours, it could be quite disturbing, and so I would urge you to think about that. Pardon?
Is it the current sign lit?
With one, it's not lit. It's not going to be flashing or on all night long.
These signs will not be flashing. If they're flashing, he gets $100 a fine.
Or a day.
A day.
A day.
That's what we're trying to stress. It's going to be just an electric sign that he can change daily.
Okay.[1746.43]
And it will not be flashing. Trust me.
Thank you.
It's currently lit, right?
Yes, it is.
Not internally, but just...
Yeah.
That's what internally...
Right.
Oh, okay.
I mean, we don't know the lumens difference, but...
Any other questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Duggan, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 1. Just to follow up to the previous gentleman's comments concerning the lighting and just the overall appropriateness of the sign at this location. If you go down to Sylvan and Endicott and look at a sign down there that you can see for a half a mile away, even in the daytime. So this was an industrial one zone, and back in January of 2010, Town Meeting members decided that this needs to be more appropriately enhanced as a residential area. So we have people that live directly across the street and people that live in the surrounding area that can have a direct view of this sign. So I think it's not really appropriate. If we see more and more of these throughout that area and even into, you know, on the High Street and just throughout the downtown area, just really not the type of influence or type of designs that we would like to have representing Danvers. And just one other comment. On the existing sign, those requires a 10-foot setback from the sidewalk. So a question for the building inspector. Does that measurement to the post that holds the sign, or is it to the closest part of the sign in respect to the street?
It's to the edge of the sign that's close to the street. We have... I have the original building permit that was attached to the application. The original plot plan was accepted by my predecessor.
Because it doesn't... It looks like closer than...
Shows the post back 16 feet.
Right. With a 12-foot...
Post is 16 feet from the street.
From the street, from the sidewalk?
And the sign itself is 10?
We have a certified plot plan in our records that shows the sign back 10 feet from the street property side.
So is it the curb or is it the edge of the sidewalk?
Looks like the property line is in the sidewalk.
In the sidewalk. Yeah, sounds about right. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or comments? Okay, back to the board. We started with you, Richard.
Yeah. I hear the neighbors concerned about the brightness. I mean, I think the only comment I would have about that, without knowing the lumens rating on the existing sign and what this sign were going to be if brighter, we don't have the information to compare here to say one's brighter than the other. The applicant has agreed to take a condition to not run the sign past 10 p.m. at night. You know, I think in the summertime, that probably puts it at about an hour of this glowing thing at night. Of course, it's more of an issue maybe this time of year, but I think based on that, and I would like to hear other board members' comments, but I would vote in favor.
Ken? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it looks good. I mean, I think the illuminated portion of it is not that big. I mean, I don't think we're running into a Seinfeld situation here where... I would vote for this. Becky?
I would also vote for it. I think it'll dress it up and clean it up a little bit. The sign that's there is pretty old, and I think as long as we stay with 10 p.m., that would be acceptable.
Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't like these signs. I just look at the Sylvan Street sign and the 114, and I just think... I just don't think the town wants to have a lot of these things around, so...
You're aware Sylvan Street's in Peabody.
I'm aware of that, but as an example of what we don't want in Danvers, you know, I take that as an example. So please adhere to the bylaw and the blinking and the conditions, and I will vote for this.
Ken?
I'd vote for this.
I too will vote for this. I think this is a one-part finding, correct?
A one-part finding.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that to find that the proposed sign replacement at 22 to 28 Water Street with the conditions spoken, no flashing...
6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. As shown on the plan increases the nonconformity.
I'll second.
This is a one-part.
A one-part. That we approve it as shown on the plans, as it will not be substantially...
Static sign, no blinking, no flashing.
Right, as it will not be... As the plans, as it will not be substantially more detrimental than what presently exists.
Right. I'll give her a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Do you want to extend?
Mine always messes me up. I don't get it.
You need this one. You need...
It's the same one you gave me.
Yeah, so... Yes, that's one of them.
Okay.
Okay. Here we go. Mr. Chairman, our next case is Danvers Port Yacht Club, docket number 18-4792, requesting a finding to perform dredging and temporary storage of spoils in accordance with 3.10.2A of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 161 Elliott Street.
My name is Luke Fabry. I'm with Yardsville Fuel Services, and we are Danvers Port Yacht Club, seeking approval for temporary storage of de-watering materials.
Can I ask you a quick question? Is anybody here from the yacht club?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I want to know. All right. Okay, go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt you.
So we started the permitting process with Conservation Commission, who issued an order of conditions in November, which recorded in our last week, and we're moving into Chapter 91 permanent applications that require the zoning certificate as part of that application. What we're seeking is temporary storage for de-watering purposes. The dredge area is in the water, in this location here. The plan is to dig the material out with an excavator, bring it down to a de-watering location located in the back lawn of the property. It occupies about 12 parking spots out of 450. This is a better detail of the location right here. It will be surrounded with jersey barriers and concrete block. There's a de-watering location in this corner here. We're using the existing stormwater controls for our de-watering. There's filtration, bag filters, and then the discharge water goes into this structure here and eventually discharges out to Millet Creek through the ripracked soils that exist. The dredging process is supposed to take three to four days to complete. The Conservation Commission would like to put a condition in the order of conditions that prior to starting the project, we have to provide our testing data and disposal facility 60 days prior to starting. We need to notify Conservation Commission before we start anything, and then again, once we've completed the structure so that they can come out and inspect it, then we can use the structure. We have... They gave us a four-month period. We asked them three months to complete it, to complete the construction of this, the dredging, the de-watering, the removal of the materials, and the removal of the structure, and cleaning of the asphalt.
All right, just to be clear, we're talking about Millet Creek? Is that what we're talking about?
Millet Creek.
Is that what you're gonna dredge?
Yes.
Okay.
So this is the tidal area, the Millet Creek, and it comes over and it kind of drops its sediment load right here. There's a concrete map of the existing...
All right, so you're not going out into the river, then?
No, we're not.
Okay.
It's about 500, 600 yards. The area of the temporary structure is 3,600 feet.
Okay, and just to be clear, you've got to get permits from the state and federal government and all that kind of stuff, and you need this board's permission first before you get those permits? Or is that part of the permitting process? I'm a little confused on that.
Okay. For the Chapter 91 license, applications to dredge, there's a zoning certificate that's required of zoning and from the building body, saying that what we're doing is just a use of property. That kind of applies to a lot of structures. So it's more geared towards that, but it's required for every license. So if you were gonna build something out there, you'd have to come in and have a zoning certificate to show that that use is properly used of property. The issue came up in the Conservation Commission is whether or not temporary storage of drenched spoils on the parking lot is consistent or inconsistent with the use of the parking side of the facility. We had originally proposed to be on this side of the facility, and there were some complaints about using this area because it's public access, it was seasonal. And then when we went out with the Conservation Commission, they looked at how the access... This is the gravel road that runs right down into the Millet Creek. They requested that we move on to this side of the property. And so this is what this plan was revised to, was right to the concom. They issued their order of conditions. Our next step is Chapter 91. Chapter 91 is what requires a zoning certificate.
Okay. Once again, you cannot get permission to dredge without this board's approval first. Is that what you're telling me?
Correct. It's in two parts.
That was a yes, right?
That is a yes.
Okay.
But we can't get permission to dredge. The DEP is not concerned about this. They're concerned about this, the dredging.
Yeah.
They're concerned with the ultimate disposal of the material, but not where it's de-watered. So your question has two answers. We need it for the dredging. We're here because of this. In the past, you've issued zoning certificates for all of the Chapter 91 licenses, dredging, so forth and so on. The change is, does the material always went to this side or went out to sea? The change is this piece right here, and that's this issue.
So if this board doesn't approve of that, everything stops?
We would have to...
I just want to make clear, I don't want to give you a hard time.
If it stops, we would have to, you know, go back and try to figure out a different way to do it. And if you want to know who the issues are, I'd be happy to...
Well, I just want to clarify where this board stands in the permitting...
This will stop this permit at this point in time.
Okay. All right, we'll go to the board. You ready for questions?
Sure.
Ken?
I'd like to hear from some neighbors and stuff like this, I mean, stuff like that, but I really have no questions right now until I hear...
Jeff?
Yeah, I don't have any questions either, Mr. Chairman.
I just want to go through the process, what you went through with Conservation Commission, because I really see this as their area, not necessarily ours. But so you met with Conservation Commission, they came out to the site, they actually toured the site, is that correct?
Twice.
Twice they came out, okay. And when did you start this process with them?
It's a cover.
Okay, okay. So...
The dredging aspect of it is more of a... It is a concom issue.
Right.
Pretty much all of this is a concom issue.
Okay, yeah.
The issue that was brought up in the meeting by the partners is whether or not this portion of the property in the parking lot only, if the temporary storage of that material is inconsistent with the sort of use of this property.
Okay, and I'm sure we're gonna hear about that from the neighbors, because I know they're here, but I just wanted an understanding that the Conservation Commission did go out there, they were out there twice, that they created this. We have that order of conditions.
We have the order of conditions.
Yes, we do. And, you know, what exactly their role was in this. How long do you really think the dredging material will be? You said the dredging will take three or four days, but how long will it sit there?
I think it'll be there for above four weeks.
Four weeks?
Yes. Prior to dredging, we'll have an approval to take it to a disposal facility.
Okay.
And the only thing that we'll have to achieve is it has to paint, pass a paint filter test, which means there's no free water. And if it doesn't dry out in that period of time, then we'd augment the material with wood shavings or a polymer to absorb the water and make sure that it passes.
Okay. And it'll be trucked out of there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you go back to that second page, please? So it's actually like this.
This is Millet Creek right here. The function hall is up in this area.
So the runoff isn't gonna go back into Millet Creek of the dredged material?
No. In fact, so...
How is that not even possible? It's right on the point.
Well, how is it not possible?
It's right on the point of Millet Creek.
Because in 2010, this whole parking lot was redesigned to control the stormwater drainage.
Okay.
So there's a... This man, Catch Basin, right here, picks up basically this whole area here. He goes through a triple-chamber sedimentation here and then discharges. The water all eventually goes back to Millet Creek, either overland or through infiltration. This water here is gonna go through a 10-by-15 de-watering bag into an existing stormwater retention basin.
Okay.
So that water, we would have to fill up this retention basin to overflow, which is huge.
Okay.
It's meant to take all the runoff from this side of the parking lot. So we're generating kind of insignificant amount of water.
Okay. When's the last time you guys did this dredge?
Last time, the whole facility was dredged in 2009. Prior to that, they used to do annual dredging of that area of Millet Creek, because that's where the sediment builds up.
Right.
And it always went over to the island side.
Right.
It was de-watered and spread and...
The island's full now, though, right?
The island is paved.
Yeah.
There's no more material going over there.
Okay.
And so we needed to develop a method to hold it, de-water it, and move it from the side.
Okay. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can you talk to me a little bit about the de-watering process and how that works?
The de-watering process, it's basically, we're going to put it up in the pile and allow the water to drain out of the sediment. For this type of sediment, if you put it in a container, the sediment goes to the bottom, and the water comes off the top. It's not... It doesn't drain. What happens is the solid settle out. So we'll be taking, we have a pump set up in the...
So then the water's pumped off the top after it settles?
Right, so I have what are in here. These two items there are berms, and this is kind of what the berm looks like protecting where we take, where we pump the water out of it. And so what we'd be doing is we'd be backing up to this and unloading the material into here, and it's gonna come out now and pancake that, and build up this area inside so that we're starting to put weight on it. And then the water comes up to the top, and there are drains all the way around it to allow the water to get into this corner. The pitch of the property, and this is why this corner was selected, the pitch of the property pitches back to this corner, and from this breaks right about here. This goes this way, and from here it goes this way. The rest of this side all comes in this direction, because this is the stormwater retention basin that it's in.
And how much material are we talking about here?
500 to 700 yards.
And if this material wasn't to be stored here, what other options would you have?
Well...
If it wasn't... Let me rephrase that. If it wasn't stored at 161 Elliott Street at all, would it... Can it be trucked out to an off-site location?
Well, it's very, very wet when it comes up, so it'll haul it up the road. I think you're inviting a lot of spillage.
Okay.
If you start hitting brakes and traffic and whatnot. And the machine that we're gonna use to come up this road is more of a construction dump truck than...
Yeah.
Like over the road dump truck.
And in 2009, last time it was dredged, how long did the process take then?
Two years.
Two years. But you guys think you can do it in four months?
Well, we dredged, well, we dug 20,000.
Okay. So it wasn't quite the same dredging?
Two seasons. I should say, two seasons.
Two seasons.
Because you can only go out to sea when the weather's good. And each barge held 600 yards. We took out 18,000 yards.
Wow.
So, it's a completely different approach.
So the dredging that happened in 2009's not what's going to happen this time around?
No. We're dropping 600 yards of material out of this area right here.
Okay.
The other, asking about options, to get a barge in here, all of the piles, all of the years, basically, the marina has to be disassembled. I don't have the whole picture of it here, but the throat of Millet Creek all the way up, to get a barge in so that you can dredge that, requires...
Essentially taking the marina down?
At least one side all the way down, and we have one barge load. Not that cost is an issue for you, but to mobilize a dredging system like that to this location's about $60,000. So for one barge, it's just not feasible to do.
I have no further questions. Thanks.
And I'll, may I ask one other comment? The DEP is, basically, wants maintenance dredging in this area because the floats are touching, but this all started a couple of years ago. And there were some issues there, and this is where we're getting to this point of doing this.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, one follow-up question. So if this does get dredged now, how long does this buy you?
Well, it's been nine, nine years. I would say like every five years would be a good number. They used to do this every year.
So this is something you'll be looking to do every five years?
We'd like this to be reoccurring, correct?
Okay. Thank you.
Talk about odor.
Odor?
What kind of smell am I going to get from this?
It's going to smell like the salt marsh.
Excuse me?
It'll smell like the salt marsh.
Oh, a nice odor.
Well, I mean, it's a...
Lobsters and clams.
This is a 3,600 square foot area. This is, you know, acres and a lane.
Is it going to smell like low tide?
Yeah.
Well, that's not a very pleasant smell, then.
Um, it's low tide here.
Yeah.
Every 12 hours.
Well, it's more than that. Because it's going to dry. 12 hours dry.
Another thing, you're going to put it in a parking lot of a functioning, function hall?
Correct.
People are going to be parking in that parking lot, I assume?
Correct.
Well, isn't that, you're saying that the water's going to run away from the, from the creek into the drain and stuff like that? Isn't that going to affect where people park?
We'll be occupying 12 parking spots.
I'm not talking about the ones you're occupying. I'm talking about adjacent ones.
No, you can park right next to it.
Really?
I'll have a four-foot high, no, four to six-foot high, actually, concrete block wall surrounding the area.
All right. So my feet aren't going to get wet when I get out of the car?
They're not going to wet. None of this is coming out of here. This all goes in here. We're required to street sweep this after each dredging cycle, not after the project's over, but each dredging cycle. The club does not want any mess or any inconvenience or any odor for their guests. So it doesn't affect the parking, though. It affects 12 parking spots, excuse me.
Okay.
And at that time of year, the marina's not operational.
Well, it's not in the marina anyway. It's, the restaurant, it's operational.
No, people park here and they walk down the ramp to access their boats. There's a ramp right here.
Yeah.
There's plenty of people that are parking right here that, if you own a boat down in this area, you're not going to park over there and come in, you know, down by the pool. You're going to park right here and go in here.
But I'm talking about people who go to the restaurant. You know, I've been to the facility for different functions.
I understand.
Sometimes parking's easy, sometimes you have to kind of park away from the flow.
This will be off-season.
And the flow is what I'm talking about.
This is out of the flow, it's in a corner. It does not disrupt traffic. If you come down here, you can come around. All of your traffic flows fine, and occupies 12 parking...
Is there going to be a fence around it, so we don't have kids playing in there?
There's a six, four to six-foot wall around it.
Okay. The wall is going to be that high?
Yeah, this comes out like pancake bed.
Yeah.
You can't put it on the ground without containing. So this structure here, the perimeter edge of this is concrete block jersey barriers. The jersey barriers are going to be in this area here, because we want to be able to move them. We want to be able to back all the way up to here and dump over a jersey barrier. And the reason for the jersey barrier is when the back of the tailgate comes up and the material comes up, we want it going away from the truck.
See, when I picture a jersey barrier, I picture it probably as high as this desk here.
We're going to dump over a jersey barrier.
Yeah.
So that keeps our wheels clean. It doesn't come back to us.
Okay.
So I put a 110-foot jersey barrier where I'm dumping. I'll have to pick it up and move it as I'm doing this. But the idea is that this whole thing is contained, it's on plastic, it has stone drainage built into it. It has, this is the stone, this is the drainage built into this pad. This is constructed. And that's part of the time that's required to do this, is we have to build the structure and have it inspected by the Concom.
Okay.
If odor is an issue, this pile can be covered with plastic.
That'd be, that'd be a good idea.
Cover with quality. If you want to have that as a condition, it's covered with quality at each working day. It's not that large of an area, so...
And there are contaminants in this?
Um, I would say no.
Well, you don't know that for sure, no.
I've done a lot of sampling in the river. And last time we sampled this, it went out for ocean disposal. So there's no new activity, there's no new construction. Ocean disposal, they do not allow highly contaminated materials to go out there. When you say contamination, there's naturally occurring metals, there's mud, there's petroleum runoff from the streets that come into this, so there's always a little bit of contamination.
And it's going to drain back into the river?
No, it's not going to drain back into the river.
Oh, it's in the sewer system?
It's filtration, a 10-foot by 15-foot filtration bag, and then into a detention basin meant to handle the petroleum hydrocarbons that come off of parking lots, the sand and the grit and all of that stuff that comes up of the parking lot. So there's no, this is not heavily contaminated material. It has, like I said, naturally occurring metals, it'll have some petroleum hydrocarbons.
Maybe I misunderstood you. I think when Mr. Bonner asked you, you know, will it flow back into the creek? You said, no, the parking lot's designed so it'll flow into some sort of a catch basin, correct?
This will discharge to this structure here.
Is it going to go into a catch basin or not? Where's the, where's the water going to go?
The water from this operation...
Yeah.
Goes through filtration system.
It's filtered?
Yes. There's a 10-foot by 15-foot filter bed.
Okay, good.
Then it goes through a bed of three-quarter inch rounded stone, and it discharges into this red line outlines a detention basin that was built in 2010 to manage the water off the parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
So it goes into this, and...
Then what happens to it when it goes into that?
It soaks into the ground.
Okay. So it's not drained into the sewer system or the, or the river?
No. It's, if there's very heavy rainfall, this structure is, does discharge. But we're talking, you know, a couple thousand gallons of water at any one time, and this is an enormous structure.
So it's like a dry well?
It's a detention pond.
Yeah.
It's meant to hold, I think it was designed for 10-year storements, and it's designed to hold all that water and let it infiltrate in. And then there are overflows, so that it can overflow, but we're not putting that kind of stress on that system.
All right. I got you. Any more questions from the board?
Oh, yeah, I do. I have a question. So you have a footbridge installed there?
That's not before us.
That's not?
No. All we're doing is dredging and storage.
Okay. Because there was some dark, some concerns from neighbors, I think about a footbridge and a dam.
That's not part of this at all. We're not concerned with that.
Okay.
That's another issue another day, I guess.
So we'll get to hear that sometime?
I have no idea. I hope not. Any other questions from the board before we go to the audience? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Please go to the microphone, please.
Jane Fuller, 30 Congress Avenue. I'm a direct butter. And not only am I in a butter, but I took pictures of the proposed place of the storage cell. And I just, I just wanted to show you. The dewatering is approximately 900 feet from a bedroom window. And one question I have for Mr. LaFebre is, LaFebre, is what's, how big is that cell that he's going to build?
3,600 square feet.
So 36, so 36 by 100?
3,600. Would you like the dimensions?
Yes.
It's 12 parking spaces.
You can come up here and look at this if you want.
It is 40 feet, right here. 40 feet by 70 feet by 70 feet by 40 feet, and that's 36 by 36.
So is, this is where, so all the sediment goes in here?
Yes.
And then this is where, where the filtration system is?
This is, this is a filter. The stone right here with the textile process. There's a filter, this is a filter, and then it's discharged to a filter pad behind you.
And how tall is it?
Filter pad?
No, the structure.
Six feet, four feet, four feet, four feet, four feet. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Six feet, six feet, four feet, four feet, four feet, four feet.
By how high?
Six feet, six feet, four feet, four feet, four feet.
That's how high?
That's how high?
Yeah, it's four foot wide.
Six feet high, four feet high.
Yeah.
70, 70, 40, 36, 36, 40.
Thank you.
And this is the bag. The bag's approximately a foot and a half tall.
Yes, I've heard all about the bags. The last time that it was dredged, did you just dredge Millet Creek?
Last time it was dredged, the entire facility was dredged along with the dams, Port River, Bunkies Marina, Victoria Marina.
Yes, I know, I know. Jake Hashman did it. I actually spoke to his engineer today that did all the dredging. He told me...
He didn't dredge this facility?
He told me that the organic material that you're taking out because it's pretty much stable will smell more than low tide, and you don't know what kind of chemicals are in it. You're proposing to sweep the, up after every dredge? And so are you telling me that I'm going to have swept up dust flying through the air, infiltrating my windows and my bedroom, my... This is a, Danvers Point Yacht Club. This neighborhood was here before the yacht club, and this is a non-conforming and a two. And I don't believe that it should be allowed to be stored in the parking lot.
Okay.
All right. I would beg you not to allow this to happen.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
I addressed the question that the town had. We will be taking samples for the Chapter 91 license, and we'll be providing that data to the Conservation Commission in less than 60 days prior to...
Before you start the dredging?
Okay.
We have to have a disposal facility in hand.
Okay. Mrs. Daley, I just want to say, we received your presentation. I've read it. It is very well done.
Thank you. I taught for 40 years in the school system. I never had a problem.
It shows.
Andrea Daley, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 3. Could you clarify for us how big, from what I'm envisioning, you're going to be putting the dredge spoils from Millet Creek into a above-ground retention container? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. That is going to be lined with some sort of a impervious liner so that none of the water comes out?
Correct.
Thank you. In terms of how big this is, could you give me the number of square feet that this above-ground container will be inhabiting?
3,600.
So that's 3,600 square feet. In terms of that, could you project, or maybe the building inspector could project, how big that area would be in terms of this room that we're sitting in now?
30 by 30, right? 30 by...
How many, 900 square?
Four of these.
Is it four, four more of these?
Four of these, yeah. Four of these rooms.
Four of these.
Four of these rooms.
That is...
The 40-foot width of these squares is just about the size of this room.
And how many squares are we talking about?
Three.
Three.
A little bit bigger this way, this room.
This is a very, very complex issue. I think that the material that I sent over to you gave the impression that this was something beyond what I'm able to fathom. And certainly, the people that are in charge of the Chapter 91 are having difficulty with this, too. And I'm going to keep, keep my comments to what is happening here right now and what is being requested. Basically, we're talking about almost four times the size of this room, time either six feet tall, which is about his height, or four feet tall. That is a tremendous, tremendous amount of dredging. It's about almost 700 cubic yards of stuff that's going to be taken out of Millet Creek. That Millet Creek has in it chromium, arsenic, lead. We went through this before, when we, when the town wanted to put the dredge spoils onto the, onto the Harbor Masters area, and we had 126 people coming out in opposition to it. There's a high incidence of cancer in that area of the town, mainly because of the dust that has chromium, arsenic, and lead. And it is, they say that they have the right to dredge. I am not disputing that. The dredge materials just do not come from Millet Creek. We had Liberty Street, that they built a causeway over Liberty Street to increase the flow of the waters that are coming down to feed from Frost Brook into the Porter River system. And that area was never tested for arsenic, chromium, or lead. But they had a lot of leather factories over there. One was Kern's Leather Factory, and it had an awful lot of chromium, arsenic, and lead. And when they were building this causeway, some of that mud escaped from the side, that is on the same side as the Riverside School, into Millet Creek, so that it has a mixture of not only Millet Creek and the waters that come off of Folly Hill, but also the areas where Kern, Kern's Leather Company was, and it has a lot of chromium, arsenic, and lead. And we're talking about something being siphoned off and not put on the property in which it is coming from. Now, there's two properties that are owned by the DeLorenzo family. One is 107 Rare Elliott Street, and that became a marina. The town did the dredging there several times and built up what we called Parker's Island onto the property, which is the marina. And it was stopped because of the tremendous amount of chromium, arsenic, and lead. Now, and when they dredge, when the town dredged in the year 2006 or '07, that was taken out to sea. The ones, the material that was clean, cleaner, the rest was trunked, trucked to a line landfill in New Hampshire and Maine. This dredging and putting it on, first of all, 107 Rare Elliott Street has a separate tax bill, a separate location than 161 Elliott Street. And if they want to dredge... to dredge, they want to put it at the upper end of their parking lot near Lincoln Avenue, if I'm correct. There, my husband and I went down there two Mondays ago to really take a look at what is going on there, or the possibility of what is going on there. The wind was blowing from the southwest, which would have come off the top of something that's almost three times the size of this room. And it's going to blow that dust as it dewatered and becomes more dusty or grainy. And they, they're saying that they're going to be able to cover it over. That's going to be one heck of a large pool cover to stop this dust from blowing around. And the recipients of this, of this dust, if they're, if they're permitted to put this here, they only need three votes from this board. And I'm begging this board to think of the health and the safety of the people that live on Congress Avenue in that upper end of Elliott Street, because there's no stopping the dust. And this is what's going to happen. Now, they could store it on their own property, because that is eleven acres. The, the Davis Port, it used to be a yacht club restaurant, and it was open to the general public. Now, they changed the use of that facility. It is not, it is no longer a public area where people can come and have meals there. The only reason it exists now, it's a function facility, which you, in order to be on that property, you either have to attend a public function or a private function. And there are some people that store their boats at the marina there, but it, it doesn't have the four hundred and forty boats that they, they are allowed to store in or out of the water. I understand. I'm, I'm going to move back.
Let's move to dredging and storage.
Okay. I'm going to stay with that. I don't understand why they haven't put into their plans to store the dredge spoils on the fourteen acres that they have at 107 Rhea Elliott Street. That has not been discussed. Thank you. And I just want to have one more thing. When they do get permission to dredge and put the spoils somewhere, they need three permits, a 404 dredge permit, a 401 water quality certification, and a Chapter 91 permit. So we're asking that if this board decides to put it on 161 Elliott Street, that no matter where these dredge spoils go, the public needs to be able to see those, those three permits, which I'm assuming would be filed at the building inspector's office, but I could be wrong, because when-
Could you wrap this up, please, Mrs. Daley? We have a long agenda.
You bet you do. Thank you very much. I'm just pointing out the obvious. They're not going to be able to cover this over to prevent the dust from coming onto the properties at, at, on Congress Avenue and the other part, upper end of Elliott Street. And in my purview, it would be better for them to be using their own facilities at 107 Rhea Elliott Street where they're taking the dredge spoils out. It shouldn't be put on some other property. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment? Yes, sir.
Yeah, Pete Clement, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. As you know, I've been probably around town quite a bit as far as, you know, hitting on a drum that we shouldn't have any dredging in this area, anyway. Make a long story short, you heard the representatives say that, you know, it's going to be once every five years. Now, is this something, when you give them the okay to put it in this area, that once every five years, they're going to come back? And this is one, well, I mean, if, if, if you give them the okay now, then they're going to say, well, it's been, so we can do it again next year and the next year. The other thing is, is they're just dredging Millet Creek right now. You heard, heard Mrs. Daley mention that they did that job over there at Liberty Street, and a lot of that mud came out. If you ask them, you're going to find out that around their travel lift pit has, has definitely silted in. Another part of the marina has silted in, and the rest of that. So is this going to be an ongoing thing that every year we come before, you know, the boards, all right? Or is this a one-shot deal? I mean, if it's a one-shot deal, I don't know if you should even give them the chance. But if it's going to be every year, I mean, once, once you establish it, it's going to be coming every year? This, this shouldn't be. It shouldn't be in this neighborhood, all right? It costs a little bit money, you know, they, they got an operation that they're making the money, all right? For $60,000, put it out to sea. I mean, it shouldn't, you know, it, it's not, and that's, that's once in five years, or once in nine years, as he said. I mean, that's the cost of doing business. You want the business? Take it out to sea where it belongs. It doesn't belong on land in the residential neighborhood. I mean, point blank, it doesn't belong there. And you people got the opportunity to stop it. It should not be there. We, we've had this problem with, with Parker's Island before. They did some dredging. They didn't have permits and everything else. That's why Mrs. Daley mentioned that she wanted to see the permits in hand, all right? This gone on for eight years that they, they were doing dredging without permits. And we come up to these meetings and we're to ask about, about permits, and we're told by people in this, in this very building, oh, they got, they have to have the permits or else they wouldn't be, but they did it, okay? We're asking you to tell these people not to put it on land, to take it out to sea. That's where it belongs. It doesn't belong here. And if you give them, if you give them the okay now, they're going to use it as a grandfather, and they're going to keep on doing it all, all the time. It should not be here. I ask you that you not, not grant that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else have something new? Come on up to the mic.
Bill Bradstreet, Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. If I understood it correctly, what's being dredged out is contaminated, so it has to be disposed of someplace. The liquid that comes off it when it's drying out is contaminated. It will be collected in a cement collection box.
It'll be filtered first, according to the gentleman here.
When it evaporates, some of the contaminants will be dispersed with the air. Is this something that involves EPA? Is this a bad, if it's bad enough that this soil has to be disposed of in an approved site, does it affect the air that's been picking up all of these particles in the dry soil? This is, was stated, it's, it's, it's going to make a mess when it dries out. Well, when the liquid in the container dries out, does it take some of the contaminants with it, or are they all settled so that they then, then have to be collected and disposed of in an appropriate place? Does it affect the air quality? I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
I don't have an answer for that. Do you?
Do you want to give an answer to this question?
Sure.
Well, the contamination that you're referring to, this is not highly contaminated material. Is it dredged?
Okay.
Go ahead.
So I deal, I, I'm a licensed site professional. I deal with contaminated soils every day. These are way, way below what we consider to be residential standards.
What, do you have the numbers? Do you have any data to support this?
I can give you that information. We've not collected our samples from this yet because your testing data is only good for a certain period of time. We have a couple of years before we get to actually do this work.
Then how can we make a decision if we don't have numbers?
Excuse me, Ken. Because Mr. Bradstreet up there, he asked, his question was, is it going to go in the air?
No. Actually, our problem is water. We're, we're trying to get this water out. This material is not going to be dusty. It's going to be mud. And as soon as it's, has no free draining water, it leaves the sun. So we do not have dust flowing around, and then all of this gets closed up, swept up, and it's gone. This is not being disposed of on the site, and it's not going to be a dusty operation because this stuff is soaking wet. I've got to get the water out. If it was dusty, I could get rid of it just all the way, but I can't do that. The contaminant levels in this river, I've done the entire river, I've dredged a whole bunch of spots up here. When we're talking about contamination for ocean disposal, it's very light contamination compared to what they're talking about tanneries where you have thousands of parts per millions of chromium and hundreds of parts per millions of arsenic. This is in the single digits to low, like twenty range. And the arsenic, that's chromium. Arsenic is even lower. And that's for all the samples that have been collected previously. And going out to sea is not just $60,000 and go out to sea. One biological sample you go out to sea is ninety, $95,000. So just those two components of it, to take five hundred, six hundred yards out to sea would be in the order of $250,000, which obviously doesn't happen. This is not, it's not a dusty operation. In terms of the contaminants, the 401 water quality certification that Ms. Daley referred to is all about water quality discharge and the monitoring that's required of that. And if there's a problem, I'm, I'm pulling these in and reporting them to the DDP. They set standards that I have to meet for surface water discharge and for groundwater discharge. You can't just go around dumping this stuff wherever you want it. And with respect to all of the permits, they've had all the permits to do this dredging. I, I oversaw that. There's no missing permits. They're recorded, they're registered deeds. They're out there. So I don't know what they're talking about with that respect. And that's all I have to say.
Okay. Did you get your question answered, Mr. Brad?
Part of it, again, they have to dredge this and dispose of the, whatever dredgings in an appropriate, appropriate place because it is a, it's contaminated.
No, no.
It's not?
No, we have to dispose of it upland because it'll cost $250,000 to go out to sea.
I hear what you're saying, but the cost of it is not my concern. It's what you're doing.
The contaminant of concern for upland disposal is salt.
So you're-
It's not chromium, it's not arsenic. There's no petroleum, it's salt. They don't allow you to take dredge spoils from the ocean and put them in a non-marine environment.
Okay. I think, I think what I was getting at was, it's contaminated. You have to dredge it, and you have to treat it appropriately. If the water is going into a containment tank, the solids will settle. The water from the tank has contaminants in it, so it will then go back into the river to maybe multiply the amount of contamination that's there. So that if you have to dredge it again, it's not only going to be bad, it's going to be worse because it's more-
Does it work like that?
No? Okay.
It doesn't?
You're the expert. I'm just asking a question.
It's, it won't, it doesn't work like that. And the other part of this is the metals. They adhere to soil. They want, this is, this has metals in it because it's all clay and organic. If I was to filter contaminated water to make it clean, I'd put it through P or activated carbon. It wants to be in the mud. It doesn't want to come out of the mud of the water. It just, it, it bonds to the, to the mud, to the carbon in the mud. That's what attracts the metals. And the problem with upland disposal is salt. It's not chromium, it's not arsenic or anything else. It's salt. The DDP does not want salt spoils going anywhere. You have to have a specific landfill to bring it to. And it's never an issue of, for this type of dredging, don't get me wrong, this is just routine maintenance dredging. There are areas that have dumped their contaminated materials into areas that have to be dredged for remediation. That's a whole different animal. But, you know, you go up and down this river, there's, there's low levels of metals, and there's, there's plenty of DDP documents that looks natural back there.
Can we move this along?
Yes.
I hear his explanation. He obviously knows more than I do about this, but I share the concern of the residents of the area, that it might make improvements for the property owner. It's going to be detrimental to the abutters of the property, and I can only see this getting worse down the road, not better. Thank you.
All right. I'm going to take one more question or comment, and then we're going to move on. We don't want to be here all night. Any other questions or com, well, I already had you, ma'am. Anybody new? Okay, we're going to move on. Back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, before we deliberate, if I could ask just an additional question?
Sure.
What is the impact of not dredging?
The sediment's starting to mound up underneath the floats, and eventually it's going to cause the floats to rack, and there's, you know, there's going to be a safety issue in that area.
In other words, you can't put boats there. Is that what you're saying?
And eventually the floats are going to rack, meaning they're going to be caulked at an angle for anybody to walk on.
And you said it takes about two years, provided this board approves you, and then you continue on to your next steps. So it's two years before you actually get to this?
Quite possibly.
So we're talking 2020, 21, somewhere in there?
So the, the Chapter 91 license will take probably close to nine months to get, and then you can only do this between September 15th and February 15th.
Okay.
So if you're not in the right cycle, you don't dredge.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, deliberations.
Yeah, so I don't under, so it's all a money thing, right? I mean, you, you could, before you put it out to sea, in 2003, was it, or the last time?
It's eighteen thousand yards versus six hundred yards. For the ten years leading up to 2009, material was taken out of small quarries every year.
Yeah, I just think it's too, like, I wouldn't want my bedroom window to be there if dust was blowing, possible contaminant, contaminants and dust and-
It's softing wet. It's not a dust problem. It's going to be the middle of winter, and the closest resident, she says she's nine hundred feet away.
Ken, can you make a comment instead of asking questions?
All right, yeah, all right. I, I wouldn't vote for this.
Thank you.
That's my comment.
Jeff?
I'm sufficiently satisfied. Would you take a condition to cover it?
Yes.
I would vote for it.
And you are a licensed site professional who would be jeopardizing your license if you were not dealing with contaminated soil properly, is my understanding. And so I feel that you have, it's not like just the yacht club people are deciding that they're going to start digging. You know, they've hired professionals, and obviously Conservation Commission has reviewed this, and Chapter 91 and the state will be reviewing this. I think this is beyond my expertise in terms of dealing with contaminated soils and issues. And I would agree that as long as it's covered, it sounds like it's going to be wet material and the coverage isn't that big of an issue. I would vote for this.
Ken?
I think their hands are a little tied. The island is full. As we, we all know, the island is full. We can't put anything there. I think this is a kind of a viable place. I think if it's covered-
When the dredging-
I would vote for it. It's, it's in the off-season. I would vote for this.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, usually we're, we're talking about zoning and setbacks and projects on different sites, and I think part of the decision we have to make is, is this detrimental to the neighborhood? Clearly, the neighbors think so. You know, I don't think I'd want this happening next to my house, so based on that, I would not vote for this.
I, too, would not vote for this. You know, we kind of glossed over the smell. I wouldn't want to live near this place with this, whatever you call it, smell, low-tide smell or whatever. And I did ask the applicant, if this board didn't approve, what would they do? And you said you'd take another course. So I challenge you, take another course. I don't have a problem with the dredging. I do have a problem with the storage. I wouldn't want to live near this, and I will not vote for this. So what do we need, three votes?
Yeah, you got it.
We got them.
All right. Can I get a motion, please? Is it one part or two? Rich?
So one part. And the request was whether it was one time or to allow them to do it in the future. This part of your decision, too.
I think, in my opinion, I would say one time.
One time, sure.
One time, sure.
I have a problem with you with the two minutes in perpetuity.
I agree.
Yeah. So Chairman, I move that the board grant the finding for the proposed dredging with the stipulate, two stipulations, a one-time deal and that the material be covered as shown on the plan. It will not be substantially more detrimental than what potentially presently exists.
Wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have to include the...
You want the special...
When you're doing these, uh, non-residential use in residential zone, you have to include the special thermical criteria.
All right, go ahead, read that.
Just the criteria?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, the municipal water and sewer system shall not become overloaded by the proposed use. The public streets shall not become overloaded by proposed use. The value of the land and buildings will not be depreciated by the proposed use. The specific site is an appropriate location for this use of structures. The use developed will not adversely affect the neighborhood. There will not be an undue nuisance or serious hazard to vehicles or pedestrians. Inadequate and appropriate facilities will be provided to ensure the proper operation of the proposed use. The proposed use of structure will be in harmony with the general purpose of this bylaw.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Aye. Three to two. You got it.
We said what?
They're going to dredge and put the, uh...
Move forward with the chapter 91 license.
What is it, 91 permit?
Yeah.
Does it want to take a short break?
Yeah. All right, we're going to take a five-minute break. Question?
Mr. Chairman, our next case is Mall at Liberty Tree LLC Simon Property Group Profile by Sanford. Uh, docket 18 dash 4793, requesting a variance to allow a second wall sign in accordance with section 37.6.2A. The Danvers zoning bylaws at 35 Independence Way, space A4A.
Good evening, I'm Jason Perillo with Back Bay Sign Company. We're here tonight to ask for a second wall sign for Profile by Sanford. Um, the, there was a sign just like this that was approved by...
Can I interrupt you for a minute? Is there anyone here from the mall?
The business owners here.
All right.
Um, so, so we permitted a sign for the front of this store. It's exactly the same as this sign. We're asking for a secondary wall sign. The ordinance has a provision for, for businesses that have a front of two streets to have a secondary sign. This, technically, this is not, this is a one street, but, but it functions much like a secondary street because Independence Way and Endicott Street, this store faces the interior of the, of the, the mall parking lot. So having this sign would be very beneficial to the business to catch some eyes on Endicott Street to guide people to the business.
You're talking about Michaels, is that it?
This is, this is exactly...
It's a sign for Michaels?
No.
No.
The sign for profile.
For what?
This, this used to be Firehouse Subs.
Weight loss.
Oh, all right.
It used to be, yeah.
Well, because I see Michaels here on this thing you gave me.
Yeah, but he did Michaels.
I know, that's what I was going to say.
Michaels was given a second, secondary wall sign.
Yeah, right.
It's like, so this was Firehouse?
Yes.
Homey Firehouse.
Okay.
So that's, that's pretty much it.
All right, so it's for, for Firehouse Subs?
Yeah.
And you want it on that side as you come in the mall?
Yeah.
On that wall?
Yeah.
All right. The reason I mentioned Michaels is I know we already gave them a sign on the side and they already faced that, that street. And it wasn't clear in your presentation who was wrong. Okay. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. All right, could I go to the building inspector and just ask, Rich, maybe you can help me, what is the overall square footage under our bylaw of this sign?
It would be the, um, full height of 3 foot 9...
By the 13?
13.
48 point 3.
Oh, thank you, 48 point. And, and the existing sign for Michaels is how much? I'm guessing that's with...
That's a much bigger...
Right, but that, I'm guessing that's 10% of the facade or whatever we allow, right?
Yeah.
Yes, because that's a big building.
All right.
On the other side of...
And, uh, so this business profile is going in place of where Firehouse is, or was, I should say?
Oh, I got it.
So it'll take that last, uh...
Yeah, just like a...
And what are the other businesses that are in there besides Michaels and this business?
Right next door is a massage...
Could you come to the mic and...
We're on TV here. We would, this is our chance to be a star. Come on up, identify yourself.
Speak in the microphone.
Sure. Good evening, I'm...
In here?
Yeah. I'm Dr. Nimavka. I'm excited to bring profile to Liberty Tree Mall. Right next door is Massage and the after that is Boston Beauty, Orange Theory, Sports Eclipse, and then Michaels.
Okay, and so those other businesses, um, I know there's not a, there's not a canopy sign, right? But there's, so they just have signs in front of them. And you're not going to have a sign on the front side? It's only...
No, we are.
So you want it on both sides?
Yeah.
The ones, the ones allowed and this is the second one you're looking for. I have no further questions. Thank you.
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So 2014 was the original sign for the front? Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Nilon. For the front, for the front of the building?
You guys gave a variance to Michaels to put one that faces the mall.
That's good.
Oh, okay. I see what you're saying. That's 2014?
We added this.
We added it. We allowed them to have that.
Okay, I have no further questions. Thank you.
All right. So you're the last unit on the end?
Correct.
Okay, and you've signed a lease for this space?
Yes, we're under construction and we're opening January 11th and the side sign is a sofa sign.
Okay. And so I'm just anticipating, um, all these other people in the middle, are they going to want?
Oh, we have, we have...
I mean, no, you can't comment on that, but I mean...
In the lease, I have exclusive rights on the side.
To that side of the building?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and what about the sign that was in the window? Are you planning on a sign in the window or no?
No, no sign.
Okay.
No sign, nothing on the patio. We just used that image from Google Maps.
Oh, okay. And, um, no patio on that side, you're saying?
The patio will be there, but we don't have a use for it.
Okay. How many square feet are you leasing?
2,100.
All right. Thank you.
What do you do anyway?
So, sure, we're a weight loss consulting business.
Okay.
It's a spin-up of Sanford Health. It's a hospital system in the Midwest, genetic testing, one-on-one coaching, immunizations.
I may go see you.
I have questions, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Ken?
No questions.
Okay, uh, just to let the board know, way, way back when, on that Michaels sign that we gave on the side, there used to be a First National sign there. And that's why we, this board at the time voted, because there was a sign on that side.
We approved this sign.
So, you know, we kind of put back what was already there. So, you know, it wasn't a unique thing. Um, I don't have any questions. You want to sign? You got a blank wall you want to sign? Any questions from the board? Okay. Any questions or comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, back to the board.
Mr. Chairman, I find when I frequent this property, uh, that that side of the building looks oddly bare. So I, I think it would help the people that frequent this place to locate it and, uh, given how crazy the parking lots and everything can be over there, um, I think this would be beneficial and I would vote for it.
Okay. I would vote for this too. And there's parking on that side of the building as well, so I think it kind of needs to be there. So I would vote for this.
Becky?
Um, I, I'm going to say that it, I think it's a destination location and that once somebody goes there once, they're always going to be going there. It's not like, uh, it's like a hair salon or somewhere else. It's not like you're going to buy, um, a retail product or a gift, you know? You're, you're going there on a routine basis. So, um, I, I would approve it, um, but I would just say that I don't even think you really need it. So...
Jeff?
I agree with Becky. I'll vote for it because the side looks kind of barren, but I wouldn't think you would actually need it anyway.
Yeah. I'd go for it.
Okay, uh, when I drove by there, uh, see, I thought it was Michaels asking for this and I kind of said anybody but Michaels because we already gave them a sign. So I, I in turn will vote for this too. Um, I have a motion, please.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board...
Did we hear the audience?
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyone from the...
No, we already went to the audience.
We already went, all right. That's right, we deliberated.
It's getting to be a late hour. We're getting a little punchy up here.
Go ahead, John.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that the board, uh, grant the variance to allow a second wall sign, 48.3 in square feet.
Mr. Perillo?
48.3?
83.
83?
Yes.
48.83 square feet. Uh, based on, uh, in the hardship, um, do we need a hardship?
Well, first of all, you know, we never asked, is this going to be lit?
Is this a lit sign?
Yeah, just like the front. Chain of wires.
Oh, all right. Okay.
Okay. We're good?
Yeah.
Uh, do we need a hardship?
Yeah.
Yeah. Let's...
Soil conditions, shape, or geography and all that.
Okay. Oh, yeah. Soil conditions, shape, or topography of such lands and structures, especially affecting such land and structures, but not affecting general zoning district in which it's located. Uh, this condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A little enforcement of the zoning bylaw would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or substant, substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your business.
Mr. Chairman, our next case is Tree, I can't pronounce it, LLC, Bruges Patel, and, okay, all right. Docket number 18 dash 4794, requesting a variance to modify the variance J649 and 16 dash 4628 to add three dormers to a residential unit rebuilding after a fire. Dormers, the dormers will meet all dimensional setbacks in accordance with section 6, table 1 of the Danvers zoning bylaws at 76 High Street.
Mine is, we just put it...
Okay, so that's good.
And what would you like to do?
We just do the reconstructions, uh, building, like what's happened on fire. We just doing the brand new roof and everything. We want to add the three dormers.
Okay. And the hardship was the fire?
Oh.
What do you, and see, we don't have another hardship. It's the hardship the same as it was before. What was it before?
Like before that, uh...
Because you reconstructed because of the fire?
Yeah. So the project has a residence, a back of two square meter apartment.
All right. And the, um, is there a business in there?
Not yet.
Because I see a sign, nice little sign in front there.
It used to, like, uh...
It's a commercial.
Yeah, downstairs is a commercial.
That's what I'm asking you.
Yes. And upstairs is a, like, residence.
All right. So there is a business in there. All right.
Not now.
Nothing there now?
Nothing's been in there for a long time.
Fire, that's why.
Ken?
So how, how much higher are you going to go than the original structure that's there right now?
Not even...
So it's going to be the same height?
Same height.
Okay. I have no other questions.
Jeff?
I have no questions.
Becky?
When was the fire?
2016.
And nobody's really been in that building all this time, right? It's not very well maintained.
Like of anyone I bought it, after that is the fire happened and we are, we don't, insurance company has problems, that's why we just...
Because you came in front of us before because you wanted a residential unit upstairs, right?
Yes.
Right, and that's what we approved?
Yes.
Okay.
No, the residential unit was granted by a previous board. What happened was a condition that it had to be owned or occupied. You guys, you listed that...
Thank you.
And then the fire happened. And we have been in there, we've met, you know, the insurance company contractors, that's been a long road trying to get... company contractors, that's been a long road trying to get this thing back.
So it's, over two years, the whole building's been vacant?
Yes, yes, completely gutted, done with it, it didn't take, there were structural issues, yes, a lot of those.
'Cause I saw the plywood just nailed onto the roof for a long, long, long time.
Right. After the explosion.
Okay, okay, so, so it really, all right, so the existing height, I'm just gonna go back to Jeff's question, the existing height of the building is what?
How high is the building?
Twenty-two feet. Yeah, twenty-two feet.
If I weren't adding all these on each side here?
Yeah. Two plus eight plus twelve.
Twelve, thirteen.
Twenty-three feet.
Twenty-one, twenty-three feet?
Yeah.
And what's the existing height? Do you know, Jeff?
The adormers, we just add dormers, so lighting's there.
Right.
They're all below.
They're below the existing roof line, or ridge line?
You're just cutting dormers into the existing roof.
Okay.
To get lighting to the apartment.
Okay, I have no further questions.
I have no questions, thank you.
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Patel, well, you came before us in April of 2016, and I have the minutes from that meeting, and I'll ask the same things I asked then, because as someone who knows that property pretty well, there's a shared parking lot back there, behind the building, I'm sure you're aware of, right, that I believe Douglas Appliance shares, your building would share.
He's not sharing with anybody, he's on fire.
You're telling me Douglas Appliance is not allowed to park behind there? Well, I don't know if I find that accurate, because they load equipment in and out of their building from that parking lot, do they not?
He does not. He does not, anybody use that parking lot to use the parking without my permission.
The whole space, if I remember, behind Douglas, belongs to him.
I understand that, so you're saying right now that that parking lot is, no, no one's using it?
No, he just can come and go out, not, he can park there, any.
So no vehicles are parked there? Okay, so again, going back to my original point, back in, at the last time you came before this board looking for the apartment change that we granted, the request was to, for somebody to police that parking lot, 'cause it's always a mess. I went back there while my site visit, and it's still a mess, so I find it a little disingenuous that you're here asking for what seems like a simple change, and I agree, I think what would be done would be a lot better, but what are you gonna do to police this parking lot? Because to my, in my estimation, from what I've seen, there have been no changes, except for the fact that you're not allowing people to park in it, it's still a mess.
But we just going to do the, like, rebuild the whole property, and after that, we're gonna rent it, and we could put the sign and everything, so nobody can use, like, any rough use to that parking.
Okay, but I'm not talking about use.
Cleaning up the parking lot.
I'm talking about cleaning it up.
Oh, yes, that's we're doing right now, every month.
What I'm saying is it doesn't look it.
Oh, yeah, because right now, they don't allow to, anybody to come on that property, that's why we're not doing, when we did the last time, with the justice and demolition thing, then we cleaned it out.
Okay, and what's the timeline for making the changes to this building?
Three to four months.
Okay, I have no further questions.
Any other questions from the board? I have no questions. Any questions or comments from the audience?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Matthew Duggan Town Meeting Member, Precinct One. Kind of familiar with this property, was down there the night of the fire, that was back in July of sixteen, and then last year, December of seventeen, did a site visit with the Preservation Commission, including the town archivist Dick Trask, and went through the entire property, including the second floor where there's a residential unit, and that's where the fire was contained to. My, my understanding was that the Preservation Commission deemed that that property was, where that structure was historically significant, and it was worthy of preservation, and that's, that's specifically to the front part of the building, the one that's built with brick, it's Danbury's brick. The back of the building, that was the hairdresser, that was an addition that was in very poor condition, so I was under the impression that that was gonna be removed, and maybe the rear of the structure built out a bit, but I don't think that that property owns that entire parking lot. In fact, I'm pretty sure there's an easement back there that would allow Douglas Appliance to, to get into the rear of their business.
I believe he said that, he just said they can't park overnight.
Yeah, I don't know about that. All right, so to the point that's being discussed is the dormers, those are gonna be on the front building, on the front of the building, on the street side? Or at the rear, on the rear part of the structure?
At the front.
See, I don't, I'm not in favor of having the dormers on the front of the building, because that really distracts from the whole street view. When you look at that building from, from, from the street, and you look at it, putting dormers on there would just destroy the historical design of that building. I don't know why you can't just put the dormers on the back, you know, do whatever you need to do it, and do it on the back of the building, and then, you know, the, the front still looks like it did when it was built back in the eighteen hundreds. So I, I urge you to kind of, you know, not to approve this with the dormers on the front, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have a comment or questions? All right, move back to the board.
Ken?
I would vote for this.
I would vote for this.
I would vote for this.
I think the dormers look awesome on the front, I would vote for this.
John?
Well, in light of what Mr. Duggan said, I mean, I guess we, how would we don't if, if conservation wanted, or preservation?
This has nothing to do with preservation.
Nothing.
This is not the historic district.
Okay.
The, the preservation is in charge of the demo delay bylaw, he's not filing a demo permit. I had to remind some board members, this is not anti-addition bylaw, preservation bylaw. He's adding dormers to an addition structure.
He's demod, not demolishing the building.
Okay.
We've always got the preservation as well, we're demolishing buildings.
Well, Mr. Patel, I will vote in favor, but I will also remind you of my request back in 2014, that something be done to keep that rear of that property, that does a bit of butt wetland, clean and well-maintained, 'cause it's not in that state right now, it wasn't in that state in 2016, so I hope you can do that, and based on that, I will vote for it.
The, uh, that might be an historical building, but the front is ugly, as far as I'm concerned, this makes it look better, and I will vote for this. Can I add a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I move that the board grant the variance for the addition of three dormers in the front of the building. The hardship being the same one that was established by the first variance, is that all I need to say for that? That was the hardship from the first variance.
Is it a variance?
It's a variance.
Yes, it's a variance for the, regarding that apartment, same height, that applied.
This condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district, a little enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good, and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaw.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Moving right along, thank you.
Get it cleaned up.
Mr. Chairman, I will recuse myself from one seventy-six.
All right, Ken, you're on this one.
Mr. Chairman, our next case is Tim and Mandy Michael and David Davis, docket number eighteen dash four seven nine five, requesting a finding from side setbacks to remove an existing addition and erect a new addition in accordance with Section Three of the Danbury zoning bylaws at one seventy-six Locust Street.
Hi, I'm David Davis, I'm the contractor. Sorry, Tim and Mandy, can you make it?
Okay, the owners aren't here? We'll hear it, and we'll let you know. We might have to continue it if we have a question.
The back addition is approximately eighteen by twenty-three, is there current construction in the wood? It's not on a foundation, it's on fieldstone, I'm proposing to remove that and rebuild it on a cross-wall foundation. It's existing one story now, I wanna make it two stories and put two small bedrooms above it.
So are you tearing anything down? Go ahead, Phil.
Yeah, the eighteen by twenty-three in the back, I think it's outlined in the yellow, and putting it back in the same footprint.
All right, so you're not.
If you keep going, it should be, that did go.
Right here.
Yeah, that did go, yeah, see the, right there, the highlights.
That's coming down.
Yeah, that's coming off and going back.
All right, so you're not encroaching any more than you already are?
Exactly.
It's gonna be exactly the same?
Yes.
All right.
It's actually, it may end up even being a foot smaller away from the encroachment
Well, it's either seven point seven, or it's not, we gotta go by what's on the.
Right, I think, it was talked from the homeowner of making it a little smaller, so it would, may, it's gonna be seven point seven, or it's gonna be eight point seven.
Wait a minute, we're voting on this plot plan?
Yeah, it's gonna stay right the way it is.
Once we approve it, it is what it is.
This is it.
Ken?
Okay, I guess I'm just a little confused, that's this drawing here. So this is existing here now?
Yeah.
But this is what's proposed?
Yes.
Different height, is that what you're telling me?
Yes.
It is gonna be different height, 'cause you're going up another floor.
Yes, it's, I believe it's two feet higher.
So the addition is gonna be bigger than the, the original house?
The existing addition I'm taking off is only one story.
You have to talk by the microphone.
The one I put back on is two stories.
So it's, like I said, it's gonna be taller than the house itself?
Yes, by, I think, thirty inches.
Okay, I guess I have no further questions.
You don't think that's gonna look odd? I don't know, not for us to say, but.
It's a little hard looking now, but the point is, I'm trying to squeeze the two bedrooms in, because there's three children there, and two parents, and they're in a, like a two and a half, basically, right now.
Okay. Okay, so, just again, to clarify, you're gonna take down that whole back addition, put the proper foundation?
Yeah.
And rebuild it taller than it exists now, and approximately thirty inches higher than the front house?
Yes.
Okay. But it won't be any closer to any lot line? Okay, that's all, thank you.
Jeff?
So I have a question about this drawing A. Is the yellow the existing, or is the yellow the proposed? Okay, so you're filling out this corner?
Yes, the existing is a little cut up right now.
Okay, so you're making.
There's a whole bunch of little additions put on.
So you're making the new piece bigger than the old piece?
Yes, squaring it off.
But you're not going any closer to the lot line?
Right.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Ken?
I have no questions.
I too have no questions. Any questions from the audience, or comments from the audience?
They fell asleep.
Moving right, don't wake them up, moving right along. Ken?
I don't like the fact that it's bigger than the other building, the main house, but I guess I don't have to live there, so I would vote for it.
Yeah, I mean, I would've designed it differently, but I'll vote for it, I mean, they're, it's their money, so.
The problem with the main house is a very low pitch roof.
Yeah.
So we went for the minimal pitches it was, we brought it to a five, so we'd be a little, they have rubber in the existing, and they wanted shingles on them.
Okay, I'll.
Jeff?
I'll, I'll vote for this.
Ken?
I think it's a great improvement, it's a very small house right now, so they need the size, so, yeah, I'd vote for this, I would vote for this.
I don't think it's very attractive, but that's not my place to say it, I'll vote for it. Now we got a motion, please.
Became architects, right.
I move that the board grant the finding for the proposed addition, second addition, second story addition in the back, as shown on the plans, as it will not be substantially more detrimental than what presently exists.
No, this is two-part, you gotta do the first part first.
I move that we find the proposed.
Construction.
Yeah, second floor, two-story construction, as shown on the plans increases the non-conformity, which was the side setback.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And then read the second part.
Okay, I move that the board grant the finding for the proposed two-story addition, as shown on the plans, as it will not be substantially more detrimental than what presently exists.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
Clean that building up. Okay, here we go, Kevin Sullivan and Richard O'Brien, docket number eighteen dash four seven nine six, requesting a variance from front yard setback of thirty feet to fourteen feet for proposed addition on footings in accordance with Table Two of the Danbury zoning bylaws at five Hanson Road.
This is no new information, it's just the scale, and what's submitted with the actual Thank you very much, I am not Kevin nor Richard, my name is Kevin Gagnon, I'm here representing Sullivan, I'm also here with Ricky O'Brien from Mr. Building American Modeling, he is a contractor for this project. Basically, it's a small ranch located on two forklines of Hanson Street on the northeasterly and southeasterly side, so Hanson Road runs, there's two sides of it, and Foster's gonna be located on the westerly side, so that gives this lot two frontages. Basically, the way the house is oriented, the front of the house is on the northeasterly side of Hanson Road, so the southeasterly side of Hanson Road is their side yard, and currently, there is a twelve by twelve deck on the back of the house, that's to be taken down, a fourteen by fourteen addition is to be built on pilings, within that general footprint, it'll look bigger, we'll have a deck located on the north side, so from, from this side of the Hanson Drive, you'll have the deck on the other side. So the only, we're asking for relief from the side, side walls, front line setback from thirty feet to fourteen point eight, as opposed to the fifteen foot setback you have on the side here. So it's really just how the lot was configured back in the fifties.
All right, I drove out there, there seems to be construction going on now, it's kind of, is that the addition you're talking about, or are you gonna add to that?
Right now, nope, that's just replacing the existing siding, and that has its own building permit, so the contractor went for it with the building permit, and then we realized that we had two front yards, so we had to come in front of you to get some relief for that addition, which is, if you saw the orientation of the house, it would be.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, is that the addition that I saw, or are you gonna add on to that?
Oh, we're gonna add on, we're gonna take down the existing deck and add a fourteen by fourteen addition in the back.
Okay, so that room that I saw on the construction, that was already there?
Yep, that was just resided.
All right, that's what I wanted to find out, and I went there, I, wait a minute, this is already.
No, that was, that's the old building, it's just currently being resided.
All right, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's gonna happen to the trees that are in the back of that lot?
Right now, nothing, everything that's, all the work proposed is within the footprint of the existing deck, right now we're just asking for the addition, no additional clearing or.
And if I'm reading this plot plan correctly, the side setback of the existing house is sixteen point six?
Uh, sixteen point six, correct.
And this new addition would be fourteen point eight at its shortest point?
Correct, yep.
And what's the square footage gonna be?
Uh, it's a fourteen by fourteen addition. It's a map.
No further questions?
Ken?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So when you take down the twelve by twelve deck and stairs, you're starting with a clean slate, correct?
Correct.
So it seems to me that the stairs that you have next to the retaining wall?
Correct.
That's what's jamming you up. Why do the stairs need to be there?
The stairs.
Next to the twelve by eight deck on the left-hand side of it?
There's actually the existing driveway that's located off of Foster, used to. There's actually the existing driveway that's located off of Foster, used to, it appears to be, it used to be a, related to a garage, which they've turned into a living space. So it's more of just an old, old design that they're recreating something else. So those back steps actually come down off the existing deck and they go down into the small retaining wall, about two feet high, that falls along the driveway. So that step, that walkway is a direct access from the back deck down to the driveway area, and there's an entrance.
But what I'm saying, is the retaining wall still there?
Yes, and it is low.
Why do the, why do the stairs need to be on the left-hand side of that smaller deck? Why couldn't you put them going right out into the backyard? You know what I'm saying?
Put them in the middle, you mean?
Put them in the middle. Get them off the side and then you, you're going to have tons of space. You can move that deck all over the place.
Yeah, but this is an addition.
Oh, the reason for the deck, the reason, basically the addition being where it is is because of the existing opening to the house and the layout.
This is a new addition.
I know, but when they take this off, they're starting from scratch again. This is all new. This is gone.
Right, correct. The reasoning would be that this addition is coming off of an existing case doorway out of the dining room, and then this is the kitchen right here. If we moved it over...
What I'm, what I'm saying is you put the stairs here, you can gain whatever you need. Move a foot or two either way, you're fine.
Oh, it's not a foot or two, it's thirty feet.
But what I'm saying is to get to the fifteen feet instead of fourteen eight.
We don't like when you take more, we'd like you to give us back...
So what you're saying is you want us, you want us to be within the fifteen-foot setback on the side?
I'd like it better. I'd like it better.
It would be better.
I have no other questions.
Well, okay.
That's fine.
Becky?
I hear what you're saying.
And you're saying the reason that this fourteen-by-fourteen addition, this room, you want it to come off of the house at a specific place?
Correct.
And if, if you did, what, Ken is suggesting you would be moving the whole addition over further away from where you want it coming off of the house?
They would like it centered off the opening basis. They'll be taking out the sliders and keeping that, keeping that opening, casing it out, and they would like to have it centered off of the addition.
Okay, and it's a thirty, it's supposed to be a thirty-foot setback because it's a front yard, because it's a side street?
Right, correct, Hanson Road on...
The side is fifteen.
Then we typically would go half, and you're saying fourteen point eight?
I see.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, insignificant, okay.
If it's two tenths, and we could, if it's...
Move it over a tenth of an, two tenths of an inch?
Right, right, yes. We did, we did a pretty, we did a pretty tight survey in there, so that's pretty accurate.
Okay, all right. I don't have any other questions.
Jeff?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
Ken?
I have no questions.
It's pretty clear to me what you want to do. I have no questions. Anyone in the audience have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Matthew Duggan, Town Media and Precinct One, just a kind of a point of information. So we're talking about this brown ranch house that's on the corner, is that the...
It's lot, it's the third lot that's, basically surrounded by Hanson?
Yeah.
Hanson and Foster.
So, so I read this, it says for a front yard setback?
Correct.
So is that, that deck's not in the front yard?
The deck actually exempts from setbacks for the front, from the sideline and front yard setbacks, correct?
Deck's, decks are exempt.
Sorry?
Decks are exempt.
From front setbacks?
Yeah.
From front setbacks.
All right, maybe I'm not looking at the right house. Okay.
Thank you, boss.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, moving right along.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I see this as, you know, kind of within reason with what we've granted in the past, existing sixteen point three, they're proposing fourteen point eight. I think I'd be fine with it and I would vote in favor.
I'll vote for it.
I'll vote for it.
I also will vote for it, but it says fourteen feet here.
On the application itself, it says fourteen, it should be fourteen eight.
Fourteen point eight.
I can amend that.
No, we will amend it.
We'll cite the plan.
We'll refer to the plan.
All right, refer to the plan. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, I propose that the board grant the variance as the hardship is the site and location of the existing structure on the property. This condition does not affect other properties or structures on the same zoning district. A little enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purposes of this zoning bylaw, and that is for a drawing dated November twelfth, two thousand eighteen, and a side, a front setback, sorry, proposed of fourteen point eight feet.
Hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Good luck.
Thanks very much.
See the building in spite of... In the hallway, he'll go that way, he'll go around.
Some way that way.
Two more.
Okay. Our next case is Vern Co., one fifty-six LLC. Docket number eighteen dash four-seven-nine-seven, requesting variance to alter an existing freestanding sign previously permitted by variance, G four twelve, by increasing the square footage of the sign, but eliminating and abandoning, abandoning another existing freestanding sign on the property, resulting in a decrease in the aggregate sign square footage and installing an electronic message panel in accordance with thirty-seven point five, point five A and D and thirty-seven point six of the Danvers zoning bylaws at one fifty-six Andover Street.
Is anyone here from the donut shop?
Yeah, the owners and the builders. Not the donut shop, the whole complex.
All right, I don't, I don't know, but you know, a half ass.
Thank you very much. My name is Nancy McKeon, I'm here on behalf of the advocate for one fifty-six LLC. George Burnett is the owner of the property who's here this evening, and Dan Hutchins, the sign designer, is also here this evening. Mr. Burnett purchased this property at one fifty-six Andover Street earlier this year, and he is looking to make some improvements to the property. And one of the things he looked at when he purchased the property was the signage. This is the site that has had Papaginos as an anchor tenant for many years until very recently, as you have seen on the news. So Papaginos is no longer the anchor tenant on this site, so signage appropriate to the site can be even more important. This also has a multi-tenanted building. This is the property here, Route one fourteen here, and it's an L-shaped building with the former Papaginos in this area, and then you have the two-story office building, multi-tenanted, there are about ten tenant spaces?
Eight, eight in the building.
Eight in the building and then the former restaurant site. So nine, nine, ten different tenants can occupy this property. Then we also have Honeydew Donuts located in a separate freestanding building out in front of the site. So that's the property, I'm sure you're all familiar, you're with it, it's located in Route one fourteen, Carter Zone, zoning district. Currently on the property, there are three freestanding signs. And they came to be, as I've indicated in the application, at different time periods. The first one is designated as Sign A. It's a freestanding sign that he actually cited in the Honeydew Donuts. That's Sign A. That sign is grandfathered, that's been there the longest on the site. It is also the highest on the property, it's fifty-eight feet high, and that is located in this area. The second freestanding sign is designated as Sign B on your plan, and that's located right here. And that is in existence by virtue of a variance back in nineteen sixty-seven, not because of the number of signs on the site, but because of setback considerations at that time. The third freestanding sign is Sign C out in front of the Honeydew location. That is, again, by variance, granted in nineteen seventy-one. So we're talking tonight about zoning related to the freestanding signs. We have three existing freestanding signs on the site, and the proposal is to eliminate one of those freestanding signs and create an aggregate sign that, that will actually have slightly less square footage than this, the aggregate signage that's there on the site now. So we're decreasing the number of signs and we're lowering the, the square footage. So what's being proposed is Sign A, which again is the tallest sign, we are proposing to eliminate that completely from the site, removing that, that freestanding sign. And then Sign B, and you do have the graphics in, in the application. Sign B, which currently has Papaginos at the top, would be reconfigured into the tenant panel sign. And you do have that graphic in the application, and that will look... What this does is eliminates one freestanding sign, and I've appeared before you many times on signage, and you know how very difficult it is for a sign owner to eliminate a freestanding sign, particularly a grandfathered one that is fifty-six feet tall, fifty-eight, fifty-eight feet high. But that's the proposal here, is to eliminate an existing freestanding sign and create one sign in the, the location of Sign B utilizing the, the Sign B sign posts, and create one neater, cleaner sign that will have the tenant panels on it. Part of that new configured Sign B will have a proposed reader, reader board, message board. Message would be changed only once a day. There would be no flashing, no blinging, and it would be a stationary type of sign, used for the purpose for which all the reader boards are, are used, which is to provide messaging related to the tenants on the site for marketing purposes, just as you've heard earlier this evening. Again, we've got nine tenants on this property, and having that, that reader board available is certainly an important consideration. So that is, that is the proposal. We end up with a reduction in square footage, as I've indicated in the application, of about three square feet over existing signage. It is a reduction, and I think more importantly, from an aesthetic standpoint, we're eliminating completely one fifty-eight-foot freestanding sign from the site. And part of the application provides the, the visual for you at the top. This is the existing condition as it exists today, and then on the bottom, use the proposed with the elimination of the freestanding sign and a much neater tenant panel sign. And I believe that is it, that'd be our final question.
Just quickly, where that flag is, is that where the reader board's going to be?
Yes.
And nine people are going to have control of that reader board?
No, one person will have control.
Well, how's that going to work?
It goes through our office.
Will you have them come to the mic, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Is the owner of the property?
Yeah, we, George Burnett, and we have another property like this in Raymond, New Hampshire, we have reader board, we change rate from our office in Salem, Mass. And it's, we do every, you know, we do it weekly, we run ads for the tenants, and we do the same, yeah, we're, let's say, J.D. Craig's run on a special, so we, we'd say J.D. Craig ten percent off or something, they would stay there for at least a day, minimum.
They're going to go through you?
Yeah, they'd all, they'd all go through our office.
Okay.
They, they won't have control of the sign.
Yeah, because I was a little shaky with nine people's finger on the button.
Yeah, no, they would not have control, we wouldn't want to.
Okay, Ken?
So the existing Sign B is one hundred and sixty-eight square feet, right, the Papaginos, and that's coming off, and you're going to be proposing that spot to be three hundred and fifteen square feet, so it'll be double, pretty much, the size of the Papaginos?
That's, that's correct. As you look at, that, that sign, the Papagino sign, that would be reconfigured, so the pylons could stay, but it would be reconfigured, you have all of the tenant information as well as the, as the near board on that sign, and then eliminate completely the other freestanding sign.
Okay, I have no other questions.
Jeff?
The only, yeah, I'm, if you draw a square box around this new proposed sign, I get three hundred and fifty square feet, not three hundred and fifteen, but I have no other questions. Thank you.
And we refer to our sign designer.
No, I just...
Are you counting the one fifty-six?
The one, you have to draw a square box fourteen feet wide and three point five feet high around the one fifty-six, because we encompass the entire area of the sign in a square. I have no further questions.
Becky?
Okay, so I went out and drove around the Honeydew, and I know I'm not the only one on the board that did that. I counted eight signs for Honeydew Donuts. It was like Honeydew, 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 Honeydew. I kept driving around going, there can't be this many. One, two, three.
Were they attached?
Uh, somewhere. So there's, on that front sign, there's the big Honeydew at the top, and then there's underneath, there's another huge Honeydew coffee cup looking...
Are you talking about attached to the building?
No. The freestanding.
Freestanding.
Oh, I see what you, I see where you're going.
So, so let me just ask you, what are you putting on this Honeydew sign?
We're not...
You said you're combining something?
That's Sign C. We're not proposing to touch Sign C.
It's the Papagino sign.
Okay. Oh, I thought you said...
Sign A will be removed. Sign A and B will can be, be essentially combined into Sign B.
Okay, all right. So there's the, I call that two signs, it's one sign, but it's two signs. There were three signs on the building, there were two signs in the ground, there were, there were eight signs for Honeydew.
Don't forget the roof.
Plus the, yeah, plus the big tall hun, however, fifty-eight-foot high sign, so...
Which is coming down.
Right, so counting that, so if you eliminate that, there's still seven Honeydew signs, which, I'm just saying it, it's a bit of overload for the smallest building on the site. And, and I'm just going to ask, the, the new sign is going to be exactly where the Papaginos sign is exactly in that, which is kind of on the beginning of that?
Yes.
Okay. That, that's all the questions I have.
I have no questions.
I made a plan. It's not very good, but...
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I guess I'll start, Attorney McKinn, I'm going to actually, Mr. Chair, for you, go to the building and inspect that. So how many Honeydew signs are allowed? How many are there that are legally there?
Honeydew's been a problem since they've been there, before George opened the property. Yeah, so...
Well, but, so, I mean, are they allowed, obviously they got the freestanding sign.
Freestanding signs are grandfathered, so they get to change the graphic, those we don't care, but you know, they keep putting stuff out, you know, tying it, both the front, both front pylon signs, Honeydew legal signs, they stick stuff in the ground, everything from day one, we get it cleaned up, they show back.
So obviously, there's history here.
So, yeah, well, I mean, we're not going to, tell you what, if, if the board grants this, we loan it to a permit, we're going to go out there and make sure it's cleaned up.
Attorney McKinn, what...
Can I just say the one thing about the sign, it would double, and we have an old, what was the date of this original sign install? This the old pet store sign?
Seventy-six.
The factory, the F.R.
Which one are you asking?
The sign that we're, with the...
That we're dealing with?
Sign B.
Sign B was nineteen sixty-seven.
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 So, we're doubling, yeah, we're gonna probably want a structural engineer to review the, what's in the ground, you know, just 'cause we're doubling the...
The wind load.
What's gonna pick up the wind on something that's, you know, 50 years old?
Yeah.
Fifty years old, yeah, pretty close, yeah.
So, the current height of the Papagino sign is what? And that would be Sign B, I guess?
Sign B.
It's current height?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three.
So, it's gonna be the exact same height?
Correct.
Okay. And am I correct to assume Sign C is this smaller Honeydew sign that I can see in your picture?
Mm-hmm.
That's this guy?
Correct.
Okay. And how far from the ground to the bottom of the existing Papaginos sign, Sign B, is that distance? As I, looks like on the proposed, you're gonna go 28 feet from the ground, but where are we at right now?
Well, it's gotta be hard now.
All right, give us a sec, and we'll get that for you.
May I ask Attorney McKinnon another question?
Yeah, why don't you just throw answering John's?
Forty-six feet bottom of the...
Forty-six feet, so, simple math says that's a seven-foot-high sign? That sound about right?
The sign is four feet.
Well, it can't be 46, then, if you're telling me 53, all right? Something's not adding up for me.
Can you go to the microphone, please?
And identify yourself.
Oh, I was looking at 58, I'm sorry.
Is it 58 or 53?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three high, and how much of that is the Papagino sign currently?
Why don't I identify myself first?
Yeah, and...
This is Dan Hutchins, New Hampshire sign.
Thank you, Dan.
Okay.
So, you're 53 high, how far down does the Papagino sign come?
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet?
Yeah.
Okay.
So, 41.
So, 41, right? Forty-one foot. And as far as lighting this thing, talk about that, I guess?
Internally illuminated.
Okay.
LED lighting, as opposed to fluorescents.
And hours of operation?
Half hour after the last...
And what's the current last tenant's hours? 'Cause I find that when we don't document these things, in the minutes, no one knows.
Well, the restaurant is closed right now.
By law requirement, it's a half an hour after the last tenant.
He might wanna put a condition.
But we would take that as a condition.
Ten tenants of the property, so that could fluctuate. And right now, we have Papaginos vacated, which we're trying to get another restaurant in there.
So, if it is another restaurant, they're probably 11 o'clock, something like that, we're talking 11:30, nothing after midnight?
No.
Probably not.
Okay.
Probably not.
Just trying to get a general idea.
Again, no residential neighbors.
Yep, yep, okay. I have no further questions, thanks.
All right. You're taking down the roof sign, and you're making the Papagino sign twice as big. That's pretty much what it is, right?
Taking down the 58-foot-high sign.
It's on the roof, not the ground. Honeydew. Isn't that it?
It's a freestanding.
This one. It looks like it's on the roof.
It's on the roof.
It looks like it's on the roof.
Oh, all right, well, the one that looks like it's on the roof is going.
Correct. And that's the tallest sign on the site, and that's coming down.
Yeah.
And then the square footage is essentially being moved over and decreased a little bit.
You're making a bigger sign on Route 114, and you're taking down the...
The one in back.
The one in back.
But the aggregate square footage will be slightly less.
Beautiful.
Hardly.
The Papagino sign's too big as it is, but that's neither here nor there. All right, let's get back to the, how are you gonna regulate the, what's the word I'm looking for?
Reader board.
The reader board.
Yep.
All right, Jenny Craig and the Davis Nail and Spa having a sale the same day. What are we gonna do?
Well, who pays the most?
There you go.
Pretty much.
I mean, how do you decide who goes on there first? You flip a coin?
It's our decision, it's a management decision. Typically, I would have, let's say I make sure Jenny Craig, Jenny Craig's a lot of the tenant, they've been there for 20 years, you know, so...
Okay, the one who pays the most rent gets through his crack. I got it. Let's go to Honeydew Donuts. I all, every time I ride around there, they know, they have more legal signs than any business in this town, and they also put illegal signs out. Now, I was there yesterday, they got two Mocha signs sticking in, on the islands and stuff like that. The last time, when they were before us and they wanted a drive-up window, I went there, they had, I don't know why they need all these signs. And then every once in a while, they got two signs on their pole, they wrap another sign around it. Can we regulate that, please? I mean, I don't know whether it stimulates more business, I mean, you can only see so many signs. You know, and it makes the property look kinda hunky-tonk, to be honest with you. I also noticed, it wasn't this time, but the last time, and it's no big deal, but there was a religious sign.
I don't know where that came from.
There's a church or something across the street. Yeah, I mean, I don't have a problem, it's a religious sign, so...
Yeah, and then if they could put it back again, you know, there's some...
It's just not a well-made religious sign.
No, it's not. Very important, it was actually not even, it's across the street, it's up there at Lowe's.
153, right?
Yeah, 153.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
But that's where that, that's where the light is, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that office, though, way back there.
All right, so you're gonna, you're gonna regulate this vision board, do you?
Oh, yeah, no, we do it.
Okay.
Our assistant, Kathy, she does it in the office, we do it every week.
For nine years.
You're gonna have to be tough, too, you know, 'cause everybody's gonna wanna get on there.
Obviously, you don't own the...
Are these two signs legal?
What?
Are these two signs legal?
Yeah, everything's, oh, the ones on the wall?
Yeah, the side.
I don't know, they've got, Honeydew's got wall signs on the side. They look like about the size of a big poster. Are they legal or not?
We'll take the, we won't give George a permit until you grant a relief until Honeydew complies with what is the issue with me, outside.
That's great.
How long will they comply for? Till you leave?
Well, wait a minute, and if they don't comply, who gets the fine?
George isn't gonna get a signed permit.
No, but after that.
No, but after that.
Oh, we always send the fine to the property owner.
So, beware of that. So, when they, when they put up an illegal sign, you pay.
Hundred bucks for that.
I did the build-out for Jenny Craig when I worked for Martin.
That's, they're not even asking for that.
And I left Martin in 1997.
Yeah, but maybe we can get him to give some...
That's one of the...
Been there 25, 25 years now.
And then, in that...
You're young.
Becky asked a good question, that big Honeydew sign with the bottom piece, too, do we, do we really need that bottom piece? Can we get rid of that?
Well, it's illegal.
But the coffee cup, we don't know that it's legal.
The coffee cup, I don't know if it's legal or not, I don't, who knows?
If it is not legal, it will not be there.
It could be legal, 'cause that was the old gas station sign. And if you look at that, that was a standard fixture, you look at all the gas stations, they have the pylons.
A big one, and then a thing below.
Rectangular sign below, it could be grandpa.
Well, I understand that, but that's not what I'm asking. I'm asking, can we get rid of it?
It's in the Honeydew lease, too, so, I...
All right, know how I'm asking. All right, I don't have any other questions. Any questions or comments from the audience?
I have one question.
Sure.
The sign you proposed here, I see anchor, and then two, three, four, five, six, seven other squares, and you have 10 possible tenants. How's that work?
Well, some people may have a tenant panel on this sign, and some may not. You can also, these are, these squares, you don't regulate the message, so you could conceivably divide one of those squares in half.
Okay.
You can make small squares, too.
Well, you can make it a larger sign, and honestly, we have a couple, like, we have Dr. Miller up there, I don't think he, I don't think he's really allowed to actually be on a laminated sign.
What's that again?
The doctors are not allowed to be on a laminated sign, so...
Oh, really?
He's been there for a long time, he actually just signed another extension for 10 more years, so... And then we have, you know, we have like, an accounting office, very small, you know, some of them don't, I honestly, this is, our tenants, like Jenny Craig, Miracle, they don't even know this, we did this, they don't even know what we're up to right now, that is a big plus for them.
Oh, they're all gonna want the big spot.
Well, maybe Doc, you can put the Doc's name up there once a week.
Yes.
That's right.
He's too busy, anyway.
Well, where this anchor is, what are you gonna, what's gonna go there?
That'll probably be where...
The Papagino.
The restaurant.
Oh, whatever the restaurant is. Gotcha. All right, back to the board, I forgot where we started. We started with you?
I think so, yeah. I'd vote for this.
I'll vote for this.
I'll vote for this, I know Mr. Fernette, and he takes care of his properties.
I would vote for this, I think it looks good.
Yeah.
John?
I would, too, provided we can get Honeydew cleaned up.
Just straighten Honeydew.
Yeah.
That's a condition?
I thought Honeydew was gonna be here, because they were gonna get it here full, but I'll vote for this. Can I get a motion, please?
We need a variance and a finding. Variance is for the, to alter an existing, and the finding is to combine two existing signs into one, and abandon another. Is that right?
Variance is correct. If you look at the, the front of the application, is for the increase in the square footage on Sign B. And it's going to be...
All right, let me get through the variance. I move that the board grant the variance to add a reader board electronic message panel and to increase Sign B in the hardship. What would I want for hardship?
The shape of the lot with the buildings on the lot and the...
The location of the sign in relation to the...
Building.
Building on the lot. This condition does not affect other properties or structures in the same zoning district. A literal enforcement of the zoning bylaws would involve a substantial hardship to the applicant, and granting this variance will not create a substantial detriment to the public good and will not nullify or substantially derogate from the intent or purpose of the zoning bylaws. That's the variance.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And the finding, is this a one part? I move that the board find the proposed combination of two existing freestanding signs into one, and abandon an existing freestanding sign located on the property. Increases non-conformity? No.
No, one part, isn't that substantially...
Sorry. As it will not be substantially more detrimental than what presently exists.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Good luck.
You know, I am getting better at this.
It's one part, you're reading the...
Yes.
Hey, Bob.
Two parts, you gotta read this first.
We all need to get rid of one of the freestanding...
Bob Pariso is feeling very good right now.
Yeah, but he wanted the Papagino sign gone.
Hey, we got one, boy. All right, last one.
George, did you get a new restroom over on Center Street?
Yeah.
Ah.
January 2nd?
Oh. I saw the sign up today, yeah.
Nick and me, too.
Yeah, cool.
Good.
And so, is it on Route 1?
Can we get on with this thing?
Bye.
Bye, George.
He wants to go home.
I wanna go home, I'm gonna go to bed.
Our next case is Dr. Michael Saraf, docket number 18-4798, requesting a finding for Unit 4 to convert from a medical office to general office use in accordance with 3.10.3 of the Danvers zoning bylaws, to Orchard Lane, Unit 4.
Thank you very much, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you for waiting.
I'm trying to find the unit company. I did it to buy from sellers, and the buyers are here, so, Nick Williamson, to the...
Great.
Good evening, Nick Williamson. We're interested in buying multiple units in this building, one of which is the one that we're here for today. My business partner's wife and himself run a business in Athens for many years in Taiwan. They started it here last year, and have been running it in their house, and are just looking for it, for home for it, to get it out of their house. So, it would be very convenient to have our business running there, and him and I run together, and his wife's business operating out of the same building. So, it has been primarily used as a dental office and medical building. So, we're just asking that Unit 4, which is currently a dental office, be allowed to have a general business there.
A retail business?
It's not, well, we do, all their selling is done online. There'll be absolutely zero foot traffic and no retail, which, basically, what she does is high-end, she basically is a high-end purchaser. She buys stuff and sells it online, mostly out of the country. High-end jewelry, things of that nature. There'll be zero retail traffic, so I have maybe one employee, no foot traffic, and she just needs an office, some storage space, and a place to stage to be able to take pictures of the products that she's shipping out.
So, this is a condominium, right?
It is.
And everybody has to agree to it, all the members of the...
I believe that's how they have it.
And everybody agrees to this?
So, currently...
Has to go before the condo association.
Three units up for sale.
Yeah.
So, three of the four, and I made...
All right, so you're the condo, then? You're the man?
One of the four.
All right, again, because I've been on this board 100 years, that building was conditioned to be only for medical offices.
Because it's in a residential neighborhood.
Yeah, and now you wanna change it? Initially, you said professional offices. You know, to me, that's a lawyer, an insurance man, a realtor. Well, I don't know about the type of business you wanna do, we'll hear from the board. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, this one's very different in the way that although this business that you speak of putting in Unit 4 wouldn't have foot traffic, according to what you're telling us, if we make this flip, that doesn't prevent it happening from in the future. So, I guess as far as questions, I guess I would wanna know, how many, how many parking spots are associated with this building?
There's a huge park, I think about 20, 25 parking spaces, enough to accommodate four condos on one entrance, and eleven, and there's only three on the other, so...
25 parking spots?
For traffic.
25 parking spots?
Twenty to 25, maybe one.
And are they designated per each unit? Are they allotted so many spots?
It's first on first.
It's general?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I guess, Mr. Chairman, I have more comments and questions that I will pass at this point.
Good.
Thank you. Are there still five units in here, total? So, one unit has been eliminated? Combined or something?
Yes, that's correct.
One unit was combined?
It was, over the years, there's been some shifting of what units were.
Okay.
So, there's been some space traded right now. Come on, I can see.
I have no further questions, thanks. Thank you.
So, the condo docs, the use says, "No such units shall be used for any purpose other than as a professional unit." other than as a professional unit, so what do you designate as professional unit?
That has been my question this entire time, when I see no, no other designation.
Only professional business activities shall be conducted in any such unit, it doesn't say medical.
Exactly.
No, that, that was a condition of this board, I'm pretty sure.
Well.
No.
Does it?
No, what happened was, in all our residential zones, of our rental zoning, because doctors used to work out of their homes, medical offices, hospitals were allowed all residential zones.
There you go.
That's how this was built.
Right.
That's how God, they predate, so nonconformity predates the coexistence.
So as far as the zoning is concerned, only medical use is allowed?
That's, they have to come before the board for.
Any change, yeah.
Doing anything other than medical.
Okay, so, we've just had some issues with condominiums and things like getting done, kind of roundabout without the proper condo docs, and.
Sure.
Um, so, for us, but also to protect you, I, we'd just like to make sure that you do it the right way, um.
So I'd be emailed to all the owners to, to let them know what our intentions are and what we're doing, and, you know, I, I, at this point, I haven't had any response yet, I think they're waiting to see what.
Okay, do you intend to change the condo documents, or do you intend to have this existing language?
Well, the existing language, all I can find is professional.
Right.
So I don't see anything that says medical or anything else, so.
Okay.
Again, I mean, it is a business she's been running, I, I understand your interpretation as a lawyer, a realtor, but that wasn't my interpretation, so.
Okay, and do you have the list of the units and the sizes of the units, I, cause I thought there were four units in there, but it says five?
There was five in nineteen, well, that's in nineteen eighty.
It doesn't list them, right?
It does, yeah.
Oh, it does?
Just, and then it just gives you percentage of owner interest.
So.
I'm not sure when unit five was transferred, but unit five is very small, I believe it was a utility room or something.
That's eleven and a half percent of the building, you wanna see this?
Yeah, owner interest.
Yes, so, yeah.
And what unit are, you're trying to buy, unit?
Four.
Four?
We're trying to buy unit four.
And does that include unit five?
No, so unit five belongs to.
Unit five, I believe, is a common area, which, which unit is God, is that two?
Could you come up here and answer the question, please?
All right, I can use that, yeah.
I think that's.
Identify yourself.
Yeah, good evening, uh, my name is Bob La Boy, I'm an attorney with offices in Andover, I'm here representing Dr. Wu, uh, Dr. Wu was with us, yeah, but she had, you know, given the hour, she had to go home for a family obligation, I have a written authorization from her, I'll, I'll file it with the clerk, so you'll have it for your record, um, and I've been in email contact with, are you Nick?
Yes.
Yeah, I've been in email contact with Nick, um, so Dr. Wu owns units, um, excuse me, I'll look at my notes, uh, units three and five, so she has combined them into her dental practice, she purchased her build.
Dr. Rooney's practice, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
She purchased her two units in two thousand and five, so she's the second newest kid on the block there, okay? Dr. Sharaf purchased in two thousand and nine, so he's the newest, youngest owner there, um, and I can answer any other questions, but.
Okay, so she owns three and five?
Correct.
Okay.
But I just wanted to get you that factual information, and I.
Okay, so, you're here only requesting a change for the unit that you're purchasing?
Just unit four.
One unit?
The other unit will be used as medical, there's no change, so it's only to be able to have both businesses there, and it's really, for us, it's convenience, but it's also very little impact to the neighborhood and everything else, there's.
Okay, so, I'm just, I'm gonna say that this is for general office use, and I'm gonna kinda go back to what Bob, the question Bob asked, that, you know, we certainly wouldn't wanna retail component in there, so.
We wouldn't either, that would hurt our business, so we wouldn't, that's not something we want.
All right, I'll let the rest of the board.
Jeff?
Yeah, I mean, I, I have, uh, questions about how we would keep general business use out of there, but I don't have any questions for the applicant at this point.
Okay, good.
I have the same questions, uh, just to keep it as it would be, in the sense that you're using it and not like a retail type of place, uh, later on, so I mean, there's, that's the question, how does that happen, you know?
I mean, the application says for general office use, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, but what does that mean?
Right.
Right.
Right, it's very broad.
What's general office use?
Right.
Okay, do you have any more questions?
No, no more questions.
All right, what, you said, you, you have a business with your partner?
I do.
What's that business?
We're a wellness center, we currently have locations in North Reading and.
All right, so that goes with the medical?
Yes.
Okay, so you wanna combine a wellness center with a, a computer, sales?
We're not, the wellness center is gonna be a completely different unit.
Yeah.
We're just thinking of purchasing both, because it would be extremely convenient for my partner to run both businesses out of the same building, and again.
I thought his wife's the one that runs the business?
She runs the business, but she's, I mean, he's technically the owner, she runs the day-to-day on it.
Yeah, uh, I'm a little shaky on this, but, uh.
Let's hear the audience.
We'll, we'll, we'll go to the audience, any questions or comments from the audience? Yes, sir, you go first.
Uh, my name is Mike Denler, I live at Four Orchard Lane Extension, I'm an abbot of the property, have been for over forty-two years, um, there's limited parking, as you had brought up, sir, on the site, and when the building was full, medical-wise, they didn't have even enough room for their staff, it flowed out onto two streets, Orchard Lane Extension and Orchard Lane, um, there's an issue with Orchard Lane, and if you look at a map, of any kind of a map, there's two entrances to the area, the primary entrance is Liberty Street onto Orchard Lane, the other area, Foster Street, is very seldom used, from time to time, it's been a one-way, and it's been blocked, so this is the main entrance into the area, and if there's a lot of traffic on the street, uh, we've had problems in the past with even fire engines getting through certain times of the day, a long time ago, when the building was full, um, the whole neighborhood is affected by this, but yet, uh, for some reason, only like six or eight of us got lettuce, so the rest of the neighborhood, there's like almost a hundred homes, didn't even know about this meeting.
All right, let me, Mr. Maloney, you wanna address that, please?
Only direct the aboters, and the aboters within three and a feet of the property are known.
Okay, but it does affect the entire neighborhood, which should be a consideration, um, as far as a hardship is concerned, I don't know if a hardship can be, you have trouble renting a property, or you have trouble selling a condo.
You only need a hardship for variance, they're not asking for a variance, they're asking for a finding.
Okay, sir, thank you on that, um, it's a nonconforming use, I think if you change it to a, any kind of an office, uh, down the road, it could be any other kind of an office, it would be more of a nonconforming use for the property, uh, I'm just concerned who the next business would be, because that next business might have a lot more foot traffic, a lot more parking problems for the neighborhood, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir?
So Kevin Carney, Three Orchard Lane in Danvers, um, I grew up in that house and have recently moved back, uh, as long as I can remember, that's been doctor's offices, um, and I remember the story being, it was only for doctor's offices, because it added a value to the neighborhood it's at, now that that exit from one twenty-eight, the on-ramp and off-ramp, it, it closes that neighborhood off, um, so if that office changes, it changes the neighborhood, and quite honestly, if that office changes, I would think the change would need to add value to the neighborhood that it sits in, I don't think this change in the business would, another doctor would, um, so I remember going to Dr. Pike and Dr. Sember, uh, so, you know, and I think it is a tough street, there's no sidewalks on that street, uh, there were a lot of problems, the current owners have been better, um, but I think if we change the use of this, it does become a slippery slope in a neighborhood, so, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? Yes, sir?
Again, I'm, uh, Bob La Boy, Dr. Wu's attorney, um, so the condominium documents, which were referenced by, um, basically would require twenty-five percent to amend them, Dr. Wu has twenty-eight percent, so, um, you know, she had, you know, she has been consulted, she needed to be consulted, she obviously doesn't wanna be difficult, but I think the, the theme that concerns her the most is what I've heard from the neighborhood, which and from the board, which is, how can it be established, if it goes to general business use, you know, um, the horse is out of the barn, how do you keep it channeled, so it's just, you know, a palatable business, office use, um, you know, the, I, the, 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 uh, application had the variance history on this property, and, um, Dr. Pearson isn't here, um, but, you know, he had three applications, and the dental lab, that's, uh, upstairs now, and is not the subject of any, any of this, um, that was the last variance in two thousand and two, and my point being that, along the way, the board, the ZBA boards that have to consider this have done their best to fashion conditions, and, you know, I, I guess if you're inclined to allow it, I think the condition might be articulated something along the lines of, uh, sort of like a special permit, you know, variance would run with the land, but, you know, I'm, I'm considering that a finding is more akin to a special permit, where it could be limited to just this business, so when this business is done, and that unit wants to transact to anybody else, they're gonna have to come back and see you, and you could say yes or no, if you say no, then, you know, maybe the business have to stay shuttered, um, so Dr. Wu's in a somewhat difficult position, um, she doesn't wanna be unneighborly, uh, one of the units qualifies, uh, it's gonna be a wellness center, fits in, um, I would like to submit, may, um, this, this is what the board, I mean, this is what the, uh, building looks like now, and I, the reason I picked this picture, because, you know, the Danvers. So as Mr. Carney, one of the neighbor, longtime neighbors, as mentioned, that's what it's been forever, um, the condominium documents are a little more expansive, say professional office building, but again, I, I've been doing land use for thirty-plus years, and I share the experience that most towns, when they say professional office buildings, they're talking licensed professionals. Yeah, so, um, so Dr. Wu is concerned, uh, she's not in favor of this, um, I guess I wouldn't say that she's opposed to it, you know, but, you know, she's concerned, and, um, if the condition were fashioned as tightly as possible, it may be palatable, so, and I can answer any other questions the board might have.
You're, you're confusing me.
Okay.
Why don't we get right to the nitty-gritty, are you far or against their proposal?
We are not in favor of it.
Thank you, that's what I wanted to hear.
I have a second office in Gloucester, I'm running for.
Can you make sure you go to the mic, please?
I have a second office in Gloucester.
Yeah.
My main office is in Gloucester, not in Danvers, and I do a two-day weekly gambling, I've actually had dentists approach me to buy that practice and turn it to a five-days-a-week practice, and turn it into a mass health practice, which would not be good for Dr. Wu, this business, actually, I pulled back, and I made, I was offered. I was offered.
This is between you and Dr. Wu and, and a lawyer, we're, you can speak to the issue here.
Mr. Leven is saying that this is hurting her business, it's actually not true, I'm telling you that that happened, this business is not hurting her.
All right, that, to me, that's immaterial, whether it's hurting her business or not, I just wanna know if they're far or against it, we will make the decision about whether we approve it or not approve it, uh, and, you know, whose business is hurt, I, as far as I'm concerned, it's not an issue we'd make.
Could I just add one thing?
Sure.
So, what, I mean, one of the reasons, I, I understand the concerns of the neighbors, and certainly, if we were to go there, we wanna be good neighbors as well, and I, I'm hearing all of you, and I think one of the main concerns is traffic, so one of the reasons we wanna do this as well is because we too are a medical practice, so we're gonna have a very successful dental practice and our practice in there, if you bring in two other medical practices, you're back to a traffic problem, we put this business in that has zero traffic, you don't have that problem, we have our business and the dental practice, and that's it, so we've now eliminated that issue for the neighbors, and, you know, I understand the concerns, but I could go in further, so if there's any way we can appease that, I'm, I'm open to it, we're, we're certainly, you know.
All right, well, let's, let's hear what the board has to say, who do we? Oh, Amy, excuse me, could you?
Hi, Lenny Laduk, Hanson Road, uh, I wanna make sure that the board understands that the neighbors are against this, we're against the medical building completely anyway, I've been there for almost fifty years, and the Conneys have been there for just about as long, we never wanted the medical building, but it already appeared, we were against it, there's no way you can control, if you fight for this, there's no way you can control what's gonna happen later on, it, it won't work, thank you.
Okay, yes, ma'am?
My name is Maureen O'Coursey, and I live at Eight Orchard, so I'm right on the corner, and, um, I don't wanna set a precedent, so have other businesses in there, and when, when they did, redid the parking lot, they were parked on, like, they had to park on the street, and it was hard to get through, so, um, I'm against it.
Okay, anyone else? All right, back to the board, I forgot again, where did I start?
Yeah, over here, Mr. Chairman, I guess, um, actually, before deliberating, I, I guess I would have a question for the applicant, as to the point, um, Dr. Wu's attorney made, which is, what I'm struggling with is, how do we condition this thing, right, how do we make it so it's just this business, and then, if this business were to go away, it, it, it either has some kind of stipulation or reverts back to.
Well, it's a retail business, I don't know.
No, and he said?
It's retail, retail is retail.
Okay, but what I'm saying is kinda like what we do with EFLAs, where there's a deed restriction, if something like that can be done, where we all can feel good at the end of the day, that if this particular business was to go away, then, um, the medical use would come back, and we'd be back to where we are versus the great unknown, so I guess that's, whether that means a special permit or something to that effect, can we go that route and, and all get to where we wanna go, and I think that would appease Dr. Wu's concerns as to, all right, this is a business that's in here now, not generating any parking issues, not generating any foot traffic, um, but if that business were to go away, then we'd be back to a medical use.
Why, why do we care about Dr. Wu?
Well, I'm not, it's not so much that, I care about the detriment to the neighbors.
The neighbors, yeah.
So if we grant this without any.
Protections.
Stipulations around it, or protection, kinda like an EFLA, um, then we open ourselves up to that, so. That's, that's my, I guess my suggestion to the applicant, is do they wanna change this from a finding to a special permit, and have.
You can't do that.
You can't make up relief.
You're going, yeah, you're going for a use change, well.
Well, I, all right, so based on that, I, I.
You have condo documents, you get.
Yeah, I guess based on that, I couldn't vote for this, because I think the unknown is too great here, going forward.
Yeah, I think if it's a medical office and you're going to general office, what is general office, it's a very vague statement, I would not vote for this.
Becky?
Um, I'm just gonna ask you, Rich, one question, excuse me, and the wellness center that they're proposing for the other unit?
It's already in there.
Uh, we're not in there yet.
Oh, you're not in there yet?
Yeah, we reviewed, they, they gave us.
You've approved that as a medical use?
Yes, we have reviewed it, and we have okayed it.
Okay, um, I'm torn, because office use is less detrimental to a neighborhood generally than medical use, because medical use, you have people coming constantly, fifteen-minute appointments over and over, you need a lot of parking, it's a lot of activity, um, in and out, with regard to the neighbors, um, office use, people typically come in the morning, they stay there all day, they might go out to lunch, but it's less, um, traffic in terms of the neighborhood, um, so from that perspective, I like the general office use, um. Also, from the perspective that this medical building hasn't done well and the units have been for sale, to, to provide a stable building for the neighborhood, I think would be good. However, I agree with everyone else on the board so far in that it's too vague. This business use, we need a better description of what it would be and maybe we would just approve that business. So I don't even know the name of the business. You never told us.
It's Formosa Thai.
Formosa Thai, okay.
Again, it's been operation.
But it's not your business, it's his business?
It's him and his wife's business, but I would be a partner in the real estate. I would own.
But you don't own the business? You're not an owner of the business? Okay, so you're not really speaking with regard to the business? I'm sorry, we're done with questions, but, yeah, okay. Thank you.
I don't think I will vote for this.
Ken?
I, I wouldn't vote for this either. I, I think it's just too broad. We don't know what's going to happen in the future. If there was a mechanism to, you know, like the EFLA where we could have a deed restriction or something like that, but we don't, there, nothing exists like that, so I guess I, I could not vote for this.
I won't vote for this. This is a retail business, whether you get in traffic coming or not. And if we allow a retail business in here, then she leaves and the precedent is set, the next person comes in and operates a retail operation, you know, with customers coming and so forth and so on, and I won't vote for this.
I can tell you that would never happen because we would have over 28% interest in the property at that point. We would never allow it. We don't want retail traffic.
Never say never. All right, if, if the money's right and the price is right, you guys would sell like anybody else. All right, in any case, you don't have the votes. No, you can, you can do a number of things. You can continue and come back with another proposal. You can withdraw without precedent. Yeah.
Prejudice.
Prejudice. Or you can ask for a vote, and if you get a no vote, you can't come back for two years.
We'll withdraw and kind of come up with something that will appease.
You want to continue or do you want to withdraw?
You won't have to refile if you continue.
Yeah, you'll have to refile if you don't withdraw.
Continue. Our next meeting date is January 7th. Do we have anything on?
January 7th sound good to you, or you want more time? We can give you more time. All right, so you're asking for a continuous to January 7th?
There's nothing on for the 7th currently.
Explain that they need to bring.
There's nothing on for the 7th currently.
Oh, all right.
Do we want to push it out to the 28th of January?
All right, we have to push it out to the 28th. The 7th.
What's the filing deadline? Their visitors?
For the, for the 7th.
All right. You might want to push out to the 28th.
Oh, we have this on the 7th.
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Oh, that's all right. We have, we have. Got a street on the 7th, right?
All right, yeah, we can do it on the 7th.
Wait, I'm a little tired.
Just so I'm clear, I mean, the main issue here is we don't know what would happen beyond this, if, if there was some way to stop this from being the only thing. Because our, the reality is, we want to put a business there and, and help maintain this building because it's been vacant for a couple of years now. And if somebody doesn't, I don't know what's going to happen there because I don't think Dr. Wu, quite frankly, is going to handle it.
Well, you know, just to let you know, when I read this, you know, it's a professional office, again, I thought real estate office, lawyer's office, something like that, insurance agent. I didn't know you were going to put a retail business in because once you set the precedent for a retail business, then the next guy can come in and say, I want to operate one too, and, and not just on the internet.
If that's the way that it works, then I don't want that either. So that's the bottom line. So if there is some way to prevent that, then I'm all for it.
Well, I think what the board is asking for you is to find a way to restrict it to this business and this business only, and when it goes, that's it. So we're back to square one.
With a specific description of this business, how many people are going to be in there every day, what they're going to be getting?